All right, I will call the Kodiak Island Borough Thursday, July 10th, Assembly Work Session to order. Up first is citizen comments. Speakers are limited to three minutes. And if you want to call in, the number is 1-907-486-3231, or toll-free 1-855-492-9202. So if you have a comment, now's the time.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having this session this evening. And first off, I just want to say thank you to the work that you do. I know you're constantly faced with-
I'm sorry, can you introduce yourself?
I'm sorry. Shawn Olson. Shawn Olson and I, actually tonight I'm here to represent the Kodiak Area Mentor Program. But I wanted to make sure I appreciate, give my appreciation to you guys for the work that you do because I know it's very challenging and you're faced with impossible decisions at times and you can never make everyone happy all the time. And I can honestly say that each and every one of you have made choices and decisions that I have agreed with and some I didn't agree with, and it was okay. I just wanted to say that. But my main purpose for being here is I wanted to appeal to you to continue to support the Kodiak Area Mentor Program. I've been a part of it for, I guess, for over 10 years. And we are 100% volunteer. We have no paid employees or anything like that. And each and every year since day one, I've always wondered how we're going to make it next year. But with the supportive grants that we get from you and some of the donations, every year we seem to make it on by. And it might sound a little bit dramatic, but camp can get life and death. You know, just this year, I had to bury my first my first sponsee due to a drug overdose. And it hit home really hard. And we are in the middle of a very serious drug crisis with very, very dangerous drugs. And the goal of camp is to help people break that cycle of addiction, break that cycle of incarceration, and when they come back into the community, helping them find jobs and housing. And I don't normally bring notes, but this time I wanted to bring some. I wanted to say that just since January 3rd to June 27th, we have helped and assisted 112 children, 584 adults, just in the first six months of this year. And that doesn't include the families that are associated with those adults. The families sometimes start coming to our program. There's also a prison ministry that we support. I pay for this out of my own pocket. And I spoke to inmates, continuing the work that we do in program when I meet them in the jail. This year alone, I have spent 363 hours on the phone mentoring inmates. It really was striking when I went through my Securist phone account. So I just want to appeal to you guys to continue to see it in your heart to help our program. And I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Nancy. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Margaret McConnell. And I was born and raised here in Kodiak, had moved away a number of years and returned here 10 years ago to live the rest of my life here. And I started coming to camp right away, and I'm still continuing there. So it's been about 10 years now. And I just wanted to make sure everyone here realized that camp isn't just for drug and alcohol addiction, although that is a huge focus of theirs and they have helped a lot of people who are addicted to drugs and alcohol and people in jail. But it's a support group that helps anybody with any needs. So just about anybody in town would fit into, you know, everybody loses people and has grief issues, they have co-dependency. Some people have eating disorders. Camp provides help and support for everybody like that. And since joining it, it has branched out quite a bit. I know that during the winter months, they have Zoom meetings once a week on Tuesday night. And Jill, who is our retired probation officer from Kodiak, heads up that Zoom meeting. I think it lasts about an hour. I have done that in the past. They also have a small group of people who meet about once a month now and they're called Parents and Relatives of Addicts. And it's just a support group for people. So many of us families have had that problem in our family. So this little group is for any relatives or parents, grandparents that have addicts in the family. And there's also a small group of people who are now using the camp room and they're supporting a weight loss class. So they've really branched off and are helping people in so many ways. But I just wanted you to know that there are so many of us who have other things wrong. It isn't always just addictions. And the mentors and the mentees are all great people. They work together to support each other. And I'm really happy to be part of that group and I'm planning to continue. So thank you, Borough members, for any support and that you're willing to give. I think it's really appreciated by most everybody I know. So thank you again.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tammy Crabbe and I'm here on behalf of Kodiak Reentry. I'm a peer support specialist and a volunteer as well as a founding member. I believe that we all want to make Kodiak a safe and prosperous place for families and businesses through the generations. That's what we're talking about here tonight in reference to Kodiak Reentry. Breaking the cycle of sending inmates to Anchorage over and over with no supportive services, addressing why they keep going back to jail is not working. I believe that Kodiak Reentry addresses that and is a safety net for those who would otherwise fall through the cracks without supportive reentry services. Several major cities in the state of Alaska have reentry services that are available, including eight coalitions across the state. We believe it is making an impact. We want Kodiak to have the same opportunities. We are part of the Alaska Reentry Partnership, the largest collaborative of individuals, organizations, community advocates, and public entities that support life after incarceration. Alaska DOC emphasizes the impact of proactive reentry support for individuals transitioning out of incarceration to improve public safety and reduce recidivism. Kodiak is worthy of equal opportunities and services. We know it's not something that we all like to talk about, but stigma plays a huge role in how most people see and treat reentrants. That stigma is dehumanizing. Part of what Kodiak Reentry provides is hope and a way out for participants to believe in themselves and believe in the way to be productive members of society again. Our volunteer program provides reentry planning, opportunities to access community support and services for housing. We work closely with the Brother Francis Shelter as one of our closest allies in the community. We find employment assistance, access to treatment and recovery services, transportation, and we offer peer support services for reentrants and their families. I believe in our mission. I have seen firsthand the difference Kodiak Reentry has made in the lives of our families, participants. This is a human condition. Every single one of us have been touched by addiction, mental illness, behavioral issues, domestic violence, poor choices, or just having a loved one lost in the system. Kodiak Reentry is dedicated, a dedicated and trusted service that has created success stories in its work to reduce recidivism. We've we're asking Kodiak Island Bureau to invest in reentry. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming.
I'm going to keep coming back until I get good at this. I'm just coming to let everybody know that when I turned in the grant application-
I'm so sorry, can you introduce yourself first?
Ria Hayes, Kodiak Reentry, representing. Thank you. I just wanted to let everybody know that we've got two grant applications in that might not reflect in the agenda. When I sent the email, I stacked the applications in one PDF. So that is why it's not reflecting, but they're both there. And they were both submitted on time, so I really appreciate you guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep. I'll be back. And less nervous every time.
Hi, I'm Christina Van Hoogmote and this is Andy Olson and we're representing KMXT. Here, let's try places. Yeah, we're here to advocate for funding for the Kodiak Corporation for Public Broadcasting, also known as KMXT. KMXT is a hub and a cornerstone of the Kodiak community, including the outlining villages. We're the only non-paywalled local news source on the island and provide free journalism, music, and educational programs. This programming is accessible to anyone with a radio or wireless device, both on the island and at sea. Additionally, KMXT provides the public live access to important government meetings, like these, and local election coverage. We are the go-to source for local information during tsunami warnings and evacuations. KMXT is a nonprofit to ensure its journalistic integrity and local mission of educating, enlightening, entertaining, and empowering the people of Kodiak. Because of this, the station does not sell traditional radio advertisements and instead relies on community donations, local and federal grants, and other non-traditional methods of income. The Borough Support is especially necessary because our federal grant money is at risk of being rescinded, which would mean we would lose up to 25% of our funding. The station is actively working on creative ways to make up for that loss, but we cannot continue to provide these free services without community support. We ask that you continue to support public broadcasting in Kodiak for fiscal year '26.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there. My name is Susan Smith and I am the Director of the Brother Francis Shelter. Good evening, Borough Assembly and Manager Williams. I'd also like to reiterate that camp and Kodiak Reentry just do fabulous things for this community. So I certainly hope that they are funded with whatever they're asking for. I would like to thank you for your nonprofit funding for Brother Francis for last year and remind you of the importance of your support in helping us fulfill our mission in the community going forward. Over the past year, Brother Francis provided 3,636 bed nights, 14,651 meals, and recorded 211 unduplicated clients as receiving overnight services. We are seeing a significant increase in the demand at the shelter as our food service alone is up 24.5% over last year. Brother Francis positively impacts this community by providing housing and nutritious meals to those with few to no other options. According to our nightly shelter statistics, 78% of our clients are men, 22% are women, 55% suffer from mental illness, 47% suffer from alcoholism and/or drug addiction, 15% are disabled, and 10% are veterans. Brother Francis plays a significant role in keeping this community safe by providing essential services and ensuring clients' needs are met. Our services reduce the stress on our hospital, our clinics, our police department, and our fire departments, to name a few. We relieve stressors that often initiate substance abuse by addressing and solving problems that often seem too difficult to navigate alone. The reality is that no matter what social class we find ourselves in, we are all only a few steps away from needing some form of prevention, mental health services, or becoming negatively affected by substance abuse. Brother Francis is a cornerstone and a safety net for this community, improving the environment in which we live, work, learn, and play. We work hard to uplift and support the most vulnerable among us. Our significant role in the well-being of this community is a testament to the dedication of our team and the impact of our much-needed services. The work we do has a positive effect on our social services within the community. Once again, I'm reaching out to you for your continued support and financial contribution. Your financial assistance will help cover our nightly operation expenses, providing necessities, warmth, safety, and food to those who need it most. Your support is essential for our continued operation and deeply valued. I would also like to invite each of you to come into our shelter sometime so you can see exactly what your money does with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
Hi, my name's Leanna Harrington. I'm not here to ask for funding, but I am here to bring something to your attention. I just picked quite the night to do it, so I apologize. But two months ago, I had an issue with Alaska Waste. I've been trying to get this issue resolved through various people through the Borough to no avail whatsoever. Again, to reiterate what I have spoken about before, we are forced to pay contractually for this contract to pick up garbage every single week. We don't have a choice. We used to have a choice. We used to call when it was full. We paid for what we used. And then sometime in the last few years, it switched and it's a mandatory weekly obligation that we do have to have as business owners. I was, I've had a couple of issues with them, but this is really not sitting well with me. I was charged, or I was not picked up due to an overage. And I do have photo proof to you that is two fingers on my hand, not even an inch overfilled. Could not get it dumped. I called them to ask them why they would not dump over one inch overage. And I also called seven other Alaska Waste offices across the state that all defined overage as not being that inch and that they would dump. I have been kind of trying to fight this a little bit. I was also told that they would have to come back and it would cost me over double for that pickup that week. And if I didn't, that they would fine me with no definition of what the fine was. I've brought it to the Borough's attention through different departments. I'm not seeing anything. I'm not hearing anything. It has been two months. The contract does say that it is on the Borough to deal with any issues through Alaska Waste. And I'm not the only person with these issues. I can pick up my phone right now and call five different people I've spoken to in the last two days that have had issues with Alaska Waste that are not small issues by any means. People who have not gotten service and have paid for years, many issues. So I'm hoping to, one, hear some sort of a resolution on this. It might be a small fine, but if we're forced to pay for something, I think as someone who does provide for the community, you get something in return for what you're paying for. I can't just take someone's money and not give them something in return. Again, there have been no resolutions. I am also on the swap board. I am suggesting at this point, with the issues that I have heard of and I have personally dealt with Alaska Waste, I don't think it should take months to resolve. And it doesn't seem like we have community representation. The Borough has Alaska Waste representation. I wanted to bring to your attention possibly adding a resolution aspect to the swap board to solve community problems possibly and bring things with positive resolution and trying to work things out so we stop seeing these kind of issues. Thank you for your time.
Thanks for coming down.
Hello, friends, neighbors. I don't think my family's listening. My name is Sandra West and I am here to thank you for the good work that you do supporting nonprofits. A couple of years ago, I found out about it. I go, "What?" Anyway. So that's cool. That's super cool. And we have a lot of very deserving groups that work hard for this community. I noticed that there's different groups. So there's the education, culture, and recreation, which Island Trails goes under, which makes sense. But then there's also the health benefits of trails. So University of California Davis did a, wrote a, you know, they did a survey so far and they have things to say. Three ways getting outside into nature helps improve your health. Nature can help us improve our thinking, reasoning, and other mental abilities. Nature can improve physical wellness and being outside can improve your mental health. And we continue to want to talk about mental health. It's very important. And I know that there's, I've talked about this before. A survey that Matt Sue did, I have it. And I'm not sending it to you because it's just a lot of reading, okay? Not 40 pages. You don't need it. But I'll give you first paragraph of the executive summary. This is Matt Sue. This is Alaska. It's not us. It's similar but different. Investing in public open spaces is a wide choice for the people of the Matanuska Susitna Borough Basin, basin it says here. This report finds that for every $1 spent on public open space in the Matt Sue, there is a $5.31 return on investment. Not only is investment in open space a fiscally responsible decision, it is also necessary for the survival of ecosystems and all of the Alaskan communities they support. So trails, outdoor recreation supports our community. People want to move here because we have great trails. And in September, there's going to be a conference here Alaska-wide. We have people from all around Alaska coming to talk about the recreation industry and the economy of economics of outdoor recreation. Thank you.
Thanks, Sandra. Anybody else wishing to speak?
My name is Terri Storch. I'd like to see the funding for the Kodiak Area Mentor Program continue. I think if everyone asked elderly relative how far back in the family tree the substance abuse goes, they'd probably be shocked. I know I asked my grandmother and she passed away in 2004. And she said it goes back five generations at that time. And I was one of them that had the co-dependency problem. And I'm so thankful that the Kodiak Area Mentor Program helps so many people to not become an enabler to alcoholic loved one because it is very devastating, including from an economic point of view. The cost of the alcoholism in a community is just astronomical. And I really would like to see the camp program continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, well, thanks for coming down tonight. Before we move on, tonight's discussion of nonprofit funding is just the first of three, I think. We'll have it on the work session again in a couple of weeks, just so you know. Okay, moving on to our agenda items for tonight. First is an update from Kodiak Economic Development Council from Melissa Schoenwether, Executive Director. Amy, did you want to introduce Melissa or?
I think you did such a good job. This is Melissa Schoenwether. She's the Executive Director of the Kodiak Economic Development Corporation. Are you by yourself tonight?
I have Jared and I'm going to introduce Jared in just a second. And if it's okay, before I begin, I just want to say I wasn't expecting to hear from our community like this. And I just want to say how thankful I am- our community like this, and I just want to say how thankful I am as a person who lives here in Kodiak to hear people like you offering personal testimony and encouragement. It's just really an honor to speak after you all tonight. I thought that would make me feel more composed. We're very lucky to have such a great community. So, good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to share with you an update from Kodiak Economic Development Corporation. I'm Melissa Schoenwether, and I am able to serve our incredible Kodiak community through the work that KEDC does. We support businesses and the economic drivers of our island, such as you see up on the screen, and we work to facilitate solutions for challenges that Kodiak's economy may face in areas such as workforce development and housing. Do you want to, can you? This is my first time ever using a remote control. Thank you. To date, KEDC has made significant progress in areas that really do strengthen our local economy. We just concluded the four-part series of Recharge Our Community's Economy. These day-long intensive workshops began in March and they wrapped up on May 28th. They were designed to empower participants with practical tools and strategies to identify areas by community members that community members could take ownership of. And it was part of the workshop's intention to have them create solutions to the needs facing Kodiak, and to work collaboratively with city and Borough leaders as well as other various partners and stakeholders through the workshops. These workshops had the opportunities for locals to communicate together, and they determined five value chains or projects, which I don't think any will come as a surprise to you, well, maybe one. We defined childcare, walkability of Kodiak, business support, housing, and a seafood market as things that our community sees as significant economic drivers. And I want to take a moment and thank the Borough members for having people attend these workshops. Your participation and engagement offered incredible value to these workshops, so thank you, Amy, and Jared, and the mayor, I don't see tonight, but he was there as well. So we really appreciate you all coming and being part of those conversations. In 2024, KEDC made significant progress with our second Career Expo, and this three-day event connected students with business owners, organizations, service leaders, and many students having this as their first experience connecting with the local job market. And here you can see a small sampling of the businesses and agency leaders who devoted time to the first-day event. And what you can't see is in the audience, we had double that from businesses. Our businesses came out in droves to support this. Later, on the second day, students were able to spend an entire day job shadowing. Here you can see students were at the Kodiak Veterinary Clinic, they went aboard the USS, or the USCG Cypress in the bottom, you can see they were learning fire safety. They worked with Brecken as well as Highmark, and they went to different facilities that Cana has, as well as Providence amongst others. KEDC has a Board of Directors that reflect a variety of community and business organizations, and they are all deeply committed to driving sustainable economic success for our island through innovative approaches, such as our current projects, which can actually be seen as emerging economic drivers, which would be mariculture. KEDC is currently partnering with those in mariculture, from farmers to potential processors and ultimate buyers, to conduct a mariculture business plan focused on development and support as well as scale. And we are also working on a multi-use processing facility feasibility study, try saying that three times fast. We are working together with the University of Alaska Anchorage Center for Economic Development on this project. And tonight, you're going to hear from the Center for Economic Development's Executive Director, Jared Reynolds, on another important project that we are currently tackling, and it is the housing crisis here in Kodiak. Though we like to think of, instead of focusing on the crisis, our work is focused on the solutions through the Housing Action Plan. And if you have your smartphone and you're watching, you can scan the QR code, and that will take you to our recently updated and shared Housing Action Plan dashboard, which Jared, who's in the upper corner, the little small smiling face, he's going to share a bit about the work that we're doing for the Housing Action Plan, which is solution-focused. We all in this community know that there is a housing issue. We all know that there are several different layers of inhibitors for housing to be resolved, and it is our intention through this Housing Action Plan to share strategic, actionable steps forward to address these in a variety of different ways. And so Jared, if you'd like to take a few moments and begin sharing, and I will advance the slides.
Perfect. Thank you, Melissa. I can't see the slides, but I will talk through them and hopefully it's on the right slide, and I'll just sort of talk through what slide I'm on. As Melissa mentioned, my name is Jared Reynolds, I'm the Executive Director of the Center for Economic Development, part of the University of Alaska Anchorage. We work throughout the state and are really excited to be partnering with KEDC and other Kodiak partners on this Housing Action Plan. Also, as Melissa mentioned, the Housing Action Plan is really an action-oriented, as it's in the name, an action-oriented document process, with the goal that there is, you know, concrete strategic steps that Kodiak can take that will increase the supply, the availability, the affordability, and the equality of housing. So I think probably what's up on the screen right now is this timeline. So over the past three to four months, we've really been assessing the current state of housing in Kodiak, and we've done that in a couple of ways. We've done a quantitative analysis, we've downloaded lots of data, state of Alaska data, census data, other housing sources to do a quantitative analysis. We've had a community-wide survey out that, as of today, I believe, has about 142 responses from a variety of Kodiak residents from throughout the island. And then we've done stakeholder interviews to really get a better understanding of what community leaders, organizations that play a role in housing are seeing as those barriers and opportunities, with the goal that these three components will then help us move into this action phase. So really, starting in July, we're taking that next step. I want to note, the survey is still open, so if you had not taken it, if you can share it with your connections, that's greatly appreciated. We are still kind of leaving it open to get some last input, and we'll reincorporate what we hear. But from here on out, over the next few months, we're going to be developing recommendations and a roadmap. Those recommendations will be shaped by the input that we've received over this first three months, and then we'll hold focus groups, meet with Kodiak residents, meet with leaders to get input on those recommendations, with the goal that there's buy-in from the community, those are informed by the community, they're realistic, they're relevant, and they're impactful for Kodiak. We'll wrap up in October, we'll release this Housing Action Plan, and then in November, move into implementation. The Center for Economic Development is committed to supporting that implementation in partnership with KEDC and other housing leaders. We move on to the next slide. So as Melissa mentioned, on the QR code, this is available online, but we've pulled out some data, both in the data dashboard and then here tonight, to just help to shape sort of the housing conversation in Kodiak. We'll have more data points on both the quantitative analysis, the survey, and the stakeholder interviews in the final report, and we'll be presenting those around Kodiak in the coming months. But I just wanted to pull out a couple of data points. First, on the left, you can see the median adjusted rent for a two-bedroom apartment. I know I just saw an article in the Kodiak newspaper, I believe, yesterday.
Recording stopped.
Also on this housing data, but of the communities that we pulled out here, Kodiak has the highest median rent for a two-bedroom apartment in Alaska's major communities. So major is not, it's not like a technical definition, but it's really of the communities that we pulled out. That includes Anchorage, Ketchikan, Juneau, Fairbanks, Sitka, the Matt Sue, Valdez, and Kenai. You can see where Kodiak stacks up. And then the other graph there is the trends for the median adjusted two-bedroom rent. So the median is that middle rental number at a given point in time, in that Kodiak since 2018 has on average seen a 3.8% increase each year in the cost of renting a two-bedroom apartment. So we have data for other apartment and housing options, but we pulled out this as sort of a, like a standard option that could be hit in Kodiak. So it's important to note that, you know, in small communities, rural communities, data is imperfect, but we sort of look at all the data that's available, the story that it tells, the trends, to better understand what's happening in Kodiak. So any single data point is a little bit imperfect, it's survey data or census data, but overall, it can demonstrate the picture of housing in Kodiak. If we go to the next slide, another data point that we pulled out, just to sort of show the housing challenges currently in Kodiak is the housing vacancy rate. So this is a challenge throughout Alaska, but you can see also that Kodiak has the lowest vacancy rate of sort of these major communities that we pulled out. And we've really heard that repeatedly on this survey and in interviews, that there's this real challenge of just finding housing in Kodiak. We hear that throughout the state as well, that some people actually have money, they can pay for housing, they want to pay for housing, but they just can't find a place to live. And that's a real challenge in retaining workers, attracting workers, supporting, you know, the full range of businesses in Kodiak. Next graph we pulled out is just home loan activity, it's sort of a, like here's what's happening in transactions, so loans, most people take out loans, some people pay cash, but you can see the downward trend in Kodiak and in Anchorage and statewide. So a lot of Kodiak trends do, you know, match what we're seeing throughout the state, you know, lower vacancy rates, higher rents, higher prices, and then just fewer transactions happening. This data is a little bit older, it's a little bit behind some of the other data sources, but you can see that just the number of transactions per capita happening in Kodiak and in other places in Alaska has fallen. So it further decreases the availability of housing and the choices that people have. On the next slide, I just wanted to pull out, and this is better on the dashboard, you can sort of click through a couple of options here, see total housing construction, single-family, multifamily, and mobile home, but just looking at housing construction, this only goes through 2022. It varies a lot from year to year, a lot of that variation is dependent on whether multifamily housing is built in Kodiak in that year. So if, single-family is a little bit more consistent, but when you build multifamily housing, it can add a significant number of units. So we pulled out that 46% of all, 46% of housing units that were built were single-family, and over half, or about half, were multifamily, with their remaining being mobile home units. So it's important to look at what the makeup of housing in Kodiak is, and then keep in mind that those multifamily units do add a good bit of rental. Last chart I have here, or a couple of charts, these are from, so the previous few are from publicly available data, primarily from the state of Alaska. These two charts are from the survey that we did, surveying Kodiak residents, and we're not necessarily claiming that they are representative of all of Kodiak, it's who responded to this survey, but it's still really valuable information to gain a better understanding of what Kodiak residents are saying about housing. First of all is that 92% of the people that responded to our survey, this was a couple of weeks ago, so we have had 40 more responses since this, so we will reanalyze this data and update it and see what's changed, but at that point, 92% said that they found housing on Kodiak Island either not at all affordable or somewhat affordable. What's really interesting about this is that a lot of people in Kodiak are generally happy with their housing. We also asked a question that's not here, is how happy are you, or how content are you with your housing? And people like their housing, but even those people that are happy with their housing see this broader affordability issue in Kodiak. It might be that their kids can't move back to the island, their friends can't find housing, their family can't find housing. So there's definitely this recognition that there is a housing affordability challenge. The other data point we pulled out is that 54% reported spending more than 30% of their income on housing in Kodiak, so at the federal level, that's defined as cost burdened. And that, this is also, we can, publicly available data also tells us what the cost burden is in Kodiak, and this roughly aligns with what census data says about that. But it's an important indicator to understand what percent of income people in Kodiak are spending on their housing. It was beneficial for us to ask this in our survey as well, so that we could see, based on what percent of income people are spending on their housing, you know, how happy they were, how long they've lived in Kodiak, so we could break down some of that data. On the next slide, we also asked some open-ended questions on our survey. We asked people for what their policy priorities would be, where they saw the greatest opportunity for housing in Kodiak, and just other information. We kind of left it open for people to share what they wanted to about housing and where they saw opportunities. And we pulled out six key themes here that Kodiak residents are talking about. So we heard about really the need for land availability and access, that's both been common in the survey and in these stakeholder interviews, looking at short-term rentals, there's really, as is typical in a lot of communities, you know, like broad opinions on the role that short-term rentals should play in a community, but people see that as a challenge in Kodiak and want to think more about whether those should be regulated or how to deal with them due to the number of units that they're taking up. We saw zoning and regulatory reform come up a lot, wanting to streamline processes, get a better understanding of how that's blocking housing, just housing affordability and fair access, of feeling among residents that when houses are built, they're not a good fit for them, that there's some low-quality housing, they didn't feel like they were getting the quality of housing they thought they should for the price they were paying. Heard a lot about the need for incentives for local housing development that, you know, played a broad range, whether that's just investing in infrastructure, making more land available, that will spur more housing development, and then the last one is just sort of that accountability, which sort of overlaps with the fair access to housing, but wanting some accountability for housing. So we, as I mentioned at the beginning, will report a lot more data in the full report, but happy to answer any questions about what we've seen in the data we've analyzed, the survey, and the stakeholder interviews that we've done, but are hopeful that you can share our survey and really want to engage with the Borough in this housing process.
And since Jared had all that great news to share, I want to follow it up with even more good news. KEDC is looking at these points of information as building blocks. It's not all negative, you know, the fact that we see that there's a high demand for rentals, that actually has some wonderful components to it for us to work through. When we talk about reaching out to different community members, I would like to take a moment and just share that next week, KEDC, along with a representative from the Center for Economic Development, we will be traveling to some of the villages to speak with them about housing, and also the history of their economic success in the village, what that looked like, what the villages see as economic success, and to kind of build out a robust timeline, not just acutely in the villages, but how that correlates to their success and what it looked like success over here in town or in Kodiak Town. We also are going to have a kiosk at the marketplace where we're going to be just talking to people coming through and sharing with them some information about mariculture and the work that we're doing, asking them questions about um, asking them questions about what they know about mariculture, about things that they're interested in, as well as asking them about their housing situations. And also the same approach to what did it feel like? What did it look like when you lived here and you felt that there was economic success? Because Kodiak is a thriving, amazing community to live in. Far and away, the people that we talk to, even those struggling with housing issues, choose to live here. They want Kodiak to be their home. We have so many people that we've interviewed through the workshops as well as through um, different conversations and interviews. Perhaps some of you have been on some of the interviews that we've done, one on one interviews. Everyone loves it here. It's an amazing, safe, beautiful place to call home. And what we'd like to do is simply highlight areas in our past, in our present, that show success for our community and then to try to streamline and replicate how we can continue to develop success. And so I'd like to thank you all again for your time and for this opportunity to speak with you this evening. Uh, Jared is still here, the other Jared is still here. And um, I'm here if you all have some questions for us. But before we have you ask a question, I would like to open this up to acknowledge the fact that KDC is is very intentional about wanting to serve our whole island. We look to be partners with you all, with other stakeholders for the good of our community. And one thing that is is very important tonight is as you look at the information and perhaps as you visit our website and you see the Housing Action Plan Dashboard that we've just released, it's under the Resource tab. We would like to know things that you all would find useful, key components on that dashboard that at a glance that you could see now while you're waiting for this survey to conclude, things that would help you as you're crafting policies or just your needs for serving our community. We do want you all to help direct our steps with this um, survey, with this plan. And so if there's feedback that you'd like to offer, we welcome that. And if there are questions that you have, we'd be very excited to answer those.
Okay, we'll open it up for some questions. Beau.
Thank you. Uh, it's no surprise to me that land availability and access and short term rentals are one and two right there. It's no secret that those are two highly contributing factors to the housing shortage. Uh, I'm personally frustrated that we haven't seen any land disposal offerings come before us yet. I think we're all waiting for that. I'm curious to see where we're at with the lands committee, um, and and the process for releasing those. And instead of maybe thinking about one at a time and doing a slow crawl where we might dispose of some land every few years, how about we get two or three coming down the bike at the same time, folks want land. Um, to build on, uh, my question for you would be, could we expand on and add a metric or two for land availability? Where do folks want to build? Where do they want to buy? Where do they want to rent? Um, because we have people um, expressing interest in obviously land here in town. Uh, the flats is highly popular, um, we have land we can dispose there of there. Um, Manashka, the backside of Pillar, people are certainly interested in that land. So maybe if you could help us gauge where the most interest is in building, um, whether it's multifamily or owner occupied homes. Um, that way we can maybe do a little more firm nudging with some of our committees and and expedite the process for disposing of land. But um, I think that'd be helpful because it's, to me seems there's a lot of opinions on where we should start with land disposal. But I would rather hear from the community where we should focus first. Um, so I'm just curious if you could expand on that a little bit.
Absolutely. And one thing that I'm excited by your question, thank you for it or your recommendation, is the fact that um, we must be on the right track because that was part of our survey. And we are hearing from our community members. And I do encourage you all again, and you all in the audience and anyone listening, if you go to Kodiak E D C, Echo Deco, Echo Delta Charlie dot com, at the very top, you'll see a green bar where you can click it and take the survey. One of our survey questions is, what needs do you have? What land, what area, what, what is it that the community wants? And how uh, can we help uh, rank that? That's one of the questions. Actually, there are a couple of questions that are related to that. On the note though, that these aren't numerically ranked. But in regards to short term rentals, um, one of the things that we found was not so much an aversion to, and maybe it's just our sampling, but it's the fact that um, we see short term rentals as having having opportunities. So some of these things that you see, it's not that land avail, land availability is um, a pain point or perhaps short term rentals are a pain point. They are metrics and they are information that we've gathered. And there are some really thoughtful applications that we can have towards short term rentals. So I just wanted to clarify that what you see, they aren't actually ranked, but um, we are also answering those questions that you've brought up. So please take a look at the survey.
Any other questions? Larry.
I appreciate the enthusiasm of your presentation. Um, I think your slideshow was very comprehensive. I uh, share a concern that I've been on the assembly three years and I asked for a focus on land sales at the very beginning and we've had none. I believe our lands committee hasn't met for a long time. It's only called at the discretion of the mayor. We had a lot of movement on ADUs and I'm not sure where it seemed to stop at the assembly level and hasn't gone on from there. So maybe that we can take responsibility for that. I think also when we were talking about lands, there's, I don't know, several hundred lots available that are being held on and not being utilized. And we've also discussed the possibility of developmental tax incentives to uh, encourage folk to um, develop land. And uh, in the past, um, we've had good relationships with developers who developed woodland acres and um, silly flying um, all over town that that the borough would work with to develop the land and then make it available. And I think we just have to uh, keep going in the direction that you're suggesting, which calls us to work together and to examine every facet from zoning to uh, what we need to do to keep a community a great place to live, as you've mentioned. But I think we can do a lot more to encourage uh, development. And uh, I think with land, it's a responsibility of the assembly. We manage the land, we have the land, we can sell it, we have land we can sell tomorrow available if we wanted to. And uh, and I share a thought of, you know, where do people want land? And what are the restrictions, where are building codes, how do they affect us? What are, how do fees affect us? There are so many things and it sounds like that you're really drilling down into that. And I hope that you can bring us some concrete suggestions that are backed with data so that we can make some decisions that will benefit our community. It's very, very frustrating to be here and not see any movement on these important issues.
Yes, sir, and that is our goal. And we do want to take a moment and recognize the fact that there are other people in our community other than KDC that um, have had a history of working on solving these issues. We see ourselves as a facilitator just to take the information that other people have gathered and the work that everyone has done. It does become tedious, it is slow, it is tiresome. It is not something that people thank you for. And so what we see is that there have been a lot of people that have done that foundational work for us. We're simply facilitating the next step to solve these issues, to make recommendations. And to your point, we do want to be um, intentionally collaborative in this approach. And so if any of you have the desire to meet with us one on one, I believe Jared, we've spoken with Chris, Mr. French, right, from the borough. Um, I'm not sure um, who else that we have on the list that we've spoken to, but we would greatly appreciate 20 to 30 minutes of your time for a one on one interview. That is something you can schedule with us because we do believe that if if we're creating these ideas and these these next step approaches, that if we are the drivers of that on our own, it is not going to be effective. We definitely need to hear from you all. We need your expertise and your insight, and so we do welcome that opportunity to collaborate. Also, I want to let you know that I know housing is what we're here talking about right now, but we do a lot of other amazing things. If there's any questions about Career Expo or Mariculture.
I was going to ask about, yes, I was going uh, to ask about that, uh, particularly yeah, the the Mariculture work that you are doing. Um, just one quick warning about getting an interview with KDC for 20 to 30 minutes, it quickly turns into 45 minutes because the ideas just keep bouncing. Um, and I I found that our conversation is very worthwhile, uh, when we've had those. Um, but yes, uh, I'm interested in the, yeah, the Mariculture Business Plan. I'm on the board of Swampsea and we have Nick Mangini. And uh, so uh, we're doing work um, on that too, so.
Okay, um, because my voice keeps being the one you're hearing, I'm going to kind of let your ears have a break. And Jared, would you like to talk a little bit about this and make it less boring for me to be all talk?
Yeah, yeah, so we also have had the opportunity to work with KDC on this project. Again, you know, the goal is that this is a very practical project, identifying, you know, exactly how Kodiak can move forward with a primary kelp processing or multi use processing facility. Uh, and what do we take to get there? How to make it financially feasible, how it operates, how it can be managed. Uh, and so working with KDC, we assess the number of sites to look at, um, you know, what site is the most feasible in the short term? There's a short term need from farmers for kelp processing and from buyers to build that bridge. It's not financially feasible for buyers to take kelp from Kodiak that's not processed. It's too expensive, uh, and you know, kelp that's not processed at all just can't be transported from from the island. Uh, so we have a couple of things. We have engineering to do the actual engineering for for a processing facility that KDC has funding for. Our goal is to get it to a shovel ready project that can then go out and seek funding, investment, uh, whatever's available to move that forward. And then on our Center for Economic Development side is then doing you know, the business plan, a financial model uh, for how this can work and how money, the the funds flow from farmers to processors to buyers. Uh, so also taking that higher level view of that, uh, you know, what is, like what is kind of the minimum viable scale for kelp in Kodiak? What's needed to support a processing facility? How much kelp is currently farmed? What's the potential? What are, what permitted sites exist that are not currently farmed? What are prime sites that could be permitted and farmed? And then what's the potential kelp? Last part is then looking at like what some of those target markets are because that then dictates the type of equipment that's needed for processing, who some of those buyers are. And I think there's a vision with KDC and others in Kodiak that we've talked to of how Kodiak can really attract secondary processing that can provide, you know, better jobs, more business development in, you know, really some of those year round jobs uh, to provide, to develop those value added products. So I think this is a really exciting project. We're excited to be working on it, um, with the goal that a new kelp processing facility will emerge in Kodiak.
And I'd like to add to that, thank you Jared, um, that Jared and I spend a lot of time talking with um, people who are farmers. Um, oftentimes the kelp farmers, the mariculture experts here in our community are also fishermen and they are working really hard, they are the experts. Um, the, the producers are doing a great job and it's recognized by the people at market. We had the opportunity to meet with someone from an organization in Canada that was here when the um, kelp was being processed. And our farmers are very creative, they're hardworking, they produce a very good crop. And it is something that is of value. It's it's an incredible asset here in our community. And I think it's it's worth recognizing, people like Nick and others um, who are creatively offering suggestions as we were looking at sites. Uh, we spent a lot of time trying to find, you wouldn't think it would be that difficult to find open spaces on our waterfront, but we do have a lot of spaces that are locked up. And so that potential was difficult. But we, as we were talking with them, our kelp farmers are incredibly creative and coming up with suggestions for us to consider uh, for like initial phases, phase one. And then ultimately you hear from them that they have a passion to see Gibson Cove developed. So they have not just the here and now, um, business acumen and and intentionality to really dig in, but these are people who have this incredible vision and foresight of what opportunities lie ahead. And so I just want to acknowledge them and to remind our community that our our farmers, our mariculture farmers are an incredible asset to our community.
Uh, thank you for talking about that. Um, yes, Ryan.
Thank you. Um, so one of the things that I would like to see that is integrated in this and uh, early on in the infancy stages, um, I did attend your KDC meetings, uh, even though I wasn't on your honorable mention list. However, I'll let that one go today. Um, so we've heard a lot of community testimony today uh, about uh, an epidemic uh, that is gripped Kodiak. Um, I was born and raised here in Kodiak and I chose to raise my family here. But I'm also making a very conscious decision not to let my kids stay here. And so I want to be very clear and transparent uh, and make myself vulnerable on why. Uh, I do firmly believe, based on my own experiences, that Kodiak will consume the generation between 18 to 35 years old. If you are not in the right group, if you're not in the right circle, if you don't have the right centers of influences, I would love to see some integration of how we would address that demographic, whether it be through community support, whether it be through outreach, whether it be through uh, public services, integration with these nonprofits that we've heard testimony from. Uh, my fear, and again, I will make myself vulnerable in this statement. My fear is that we put economic development before mental health and wellbeing of our community and we will look like Anchorage. So those are my concerns from a realistic standpoint and judge me for what you will. Thanks.
Well, I'm not going to judge you, but um, first, thank you for being a part of, I believe you're talking about the Housing Steering Committee? Is that what you're talking about? Thank you for being part of that. Um, I think that one of the interesting approaches that KDC can offer is when we talk about innovation, we also like to recognize that choices that we make aren't zero sum. And so um, it's not our priority to elevate economic development at the cost of young people. Um, I know it is difficult for students eight, in high school with our Career Expo, talking with them. Um, they find that there's not a whole lot for them to do. Um, it was very obvious, I spent over 400 hours talking with students and developing the Career Expo last year and interviewed over 150 students at our high school. And what's really interesting is despite the struggles and the lack of whatever it is in brackets that we all think that the students have, eight out of 10 of the kids surveyed want to be in Kodiak. The two that, the, the, the percentage that will leave said that one of those were talking about how they want to go away to college, but they want to come back and make this place home. And the other percent wants to go and see the world and live somewhere far away like Anchorage. So our kids here feel safe. That's one of the things that kept coming up, that they do feel safe. Um, a number of kids talked about how they don't have a house key. And as someone who has lived here over eight years, I'm not going to give you my address, but I haven't locked our house the the whole time we've been here. Um, the kids talked about safety. They talked about having teachers and people in the community that knew them. They talked about being able to talk story when they were at the shopping center at. They talked about being able to talk story when they were at the shopping center at Safeway. People know them and they ask about them. And yet, everything that you say is true, that they still talked about the need for having something. Some of them have dreams to want to be entrepreneurs. They realize that it's very difficult to find a place to open a business. They aren't quite sure how to do that. So we do see opportunity, and I would like to advocate for the fact that if we teach our kids to be dreamers and entrepreneurs, that we can probably marry the idea of economic success with also student success. As a mom whose son left to go to the big city of Anchorage because he couldn't find a home here, this is something that I'm very passionate about, too, and I appreciate you sharing from your heart. And I do want you to feel a little bit of confidence in the fact that KEDC, our Board of Directors, our ex officio members, we're all people who live here and love the people in our community, and we will not put economic success over people. We see that the two can coexist and be developed together.
Thank you. Steve?
I would just kind of like to acknowledge Assemblymember Ryan's comments. When my son graduated from high school, he had no problem finding jobs, but finding jobs that were careers and a path that would sustain a family and things like that, there weren't that many opportunities. For the young people getting out of high school, even coming back from college, there aren't that many. So I think we, hopefully, both the Assembly and you people will be keeping an eye on that. I mean, they go to college, they come back, your only main jobs for the hospital are teachers, really. You know, there's some accounting, but there's just not that long-term career opportunities here at the moment. And so I hope you'll be doing some focusing on that, and hopefully, we can help with that. Thank you.
I think that's a great approach, is the fact that we do need to be mindful of creating opportunities for our young people. And I'm excited to have that as a challenge from you all. We look forward to working together to come up with some ideas.
Well, thank you, Melissa, and thank you, Jared, for calling in and presenting and answering our questions. I look forward to seeing the Housing Action Report later on this year. So thank you once again, Jared and Melissa. It's weird saying my name to somebody else.
Thanks, everyone. Thanks for allowing me to talk tonight.
All right. Our next two agenda items are pretty big. Five-minute break.
Yeah.
All right. Let's take a five-minute break. Okay. We are making our ways slowly back to our seats.
I'm the last.
And we're back. All right. Next on the agenda is Board of Equalization training, and this would be Nova.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to defer to our borough attorney, Scott, who's online.
Welcome, Scott.
Thank you. I believe that in the packets, there's a copy of a PowerPoint presentation. I also had prepared sort of a brief, couple of three-page summary of the process and rules. Did the Assembly get a copy of that also?
Yes, we have them.
Good, good. On the PowerPoint, is that something that I should display on share screen? Or is that something Nova that you would?
I think we already have it up, and Nova will click along with us.
Okay. Very good. So the purpose of the discussion today is a little bit of training, a refresher. There are circumstances where the Assembly sits in a judicatory capacity. You do this if you're the Board of Adjustment on planning and zoning appeals, and this is, I believe, the first occasion for doing this in the context of an appeal from the denial of tax exemption. The function when you're doing this, you know, we want to address what's the function of the Board of Equalization? What are the due process requirements? What are the general procedures? And what's your finished product? If you want to advance the slide to the next one. First, taxpayers are entitled to due process, and the Board of Equalization plays a critical role in protection of a fair process. And the process is dispute resolution. The assessor has made a determination, and the taxpayer owner disagrees with that interpretation, and the, you know, someone has to decide this dispute. So resolving it through an administrative hearing process is less expensive and easier than going to court. On the valuation appeals, the Board of Equalization consists of persons who have, you know, real estate experience, knowledge in the area, and they help resolve those disputes administratively. In the exemption context, the Assembly sits in the Board of Equalization. You'll be the judge and the jury. You must act like a judge. You have to be fair and impartial. What does that mean? The next slide. So in the judicial process, you're a judge. You want to think like a judge, act like a judge. You have to presume that the decision will be reviewed by a higher court, that it'll go to superior court or somewhere else. And the appellate court doesn't substitute judgment on the facts. You want to follow due process and existing law. You want your decision to be upheld if it ends up going to court. And part of that is making sure that it's explained well. One of the keys for due process is fairness. Now, what does fairness look like? In order to have a fair process, the Board of Equalization members should be free from conflicts of interest. If you have information about the case, expert should contact you and disclose that. If you have a financial interest or have, you know, feel so strongly about either one of the parties or the issue that you cannot be fair, you want to disclose that so that you can be disqualified and not participate. The decision should be made based on the evidence presented, not information you get from other sources or things other than the facts and evidence. The parties are heard. They have to have the opportunity to make their case and try and meet their burden of proof, but not be given an unfair advantage. Is the appeal timely? The time that they have for presentation, is it, you know, is it compatible? Do they have a reasonable time for presentation, and each side has roughly the same time? Use of previously undisclosed evidence. There's a time limit for submitting the evidence in advance of the hearing so that the other side has a chance to review it and respond to it. If someone shows up at a hearing and wants to introduce evidence that hasn't been presented, you have to make a ruling, determine whether there's a good justification, sufficient justification for allowing that evidence. Generally, it will not unless it's going to be something that's, that would be an injustice to exclude it, clearly relevant and some good reason for not offering it earlier. The other thing, the Board of Equalization wants to explain its decisions by findings of fact that are based on the evidence presented in the record. Go to the next slide. The unbiased decision-maker, I mentioned, the parties are entitled to have their case decided by people who don't have impermissible bias. I mentioned disclosing any direct or indirect financial interests, and then the chair can rule whether I, the way that I suggest this goes, you know, at the beginning, before the hearing starts, chair can ask, you know, are there any disclosures that need to be made? And, you know, if a member knows of something, they disclose it enough information to indicate what their connection is, and I recommend that you include a statement as to whether you believe you can remain unbiased. And then offer the opportunity for either party to object to the participation, then have the chair make a ruling. One of the reasons you do that is you don't want to get reversed on appeal for having someone participate that shouldn't have participated. If the potential bias is disclosed, and the parties have the opportunity to object and explain and articulate their objections, now, the chair doesn't have to accept the objections. The chair can say, no, that's, I disagree, this isn't biased. They've said they can be impartial. But if they have the opportunity to present their explanation, then it sort of inoculates the process later so that the court is looking at, okay, did the chair make the right call and was it prejudicial? So it's better to disclose and get the ruling, offering the parties the option to object. If they don't object, then they've waived any objection to the participation. Expert to communications, outside evidence or facts is not consistent with due process. Outside facts or communications would be contacts with either party regarding the case, non-disclosed facts that a member may know, but they're not disclosed, so neither party has the opportunity to rebut or contextualize them. Oh, I've been to that place. I know, I've seen this, and what they're telling me is wrong. That car is really over here. Well, if you don't disclose that you're basing your decision in part on the fact that they gave you wrong information compared to what you observed yourself, they don't have the opportunity to explain that and put it in context. And so you shouldn't base the decision on evidence that's not disclosed in the record, on things that you, facts that you know. Now, you can bring your knowledge of, you know, human experience and, you know, what's reasonable, what's rational, but specific facts, those are things that, you know, that communication, if it's relevant material, should be disclosed so the parties have an opportunity to respond. So if you do have a communication with the parties, you would disclose the facts of the communication, the fact I talked to them, the substance of the communication, I talked to them about having lunch. Whether the communication would be considered by you, no, I'm not going to, you know, it's lunch. It has nothing to do with this case. Whether, in spite of the communication, you believe you can impartially decide the case. And then again, the chair would make the ruling so that the record's clear and we're less likely to get any sort of due process reversal. The other, one of the other functions, you want the taxpayer to have confidence in a fair property tax. You listen to the case presented, you want to decide based on the evidence presented. You want to decide based on the evidence presented, establish a record that supports the decision. Any questions, ask them on the record and follow due process. The, as far as the opportunity to make their case, they've had the opportunity to submit written materials. The appellant has the burden of proof and goes first. They present their evidence, they have five minutes. The assessor responds, they have five minutes. Now, that five minutes includes any testimony they want to offer. They can, they, as a practical matter, that's not very long. And it's not uncommon for people to ask for more time. You don't have to give them more time. But if you believe that, in fairness, they should be given more time, well, that's, you can grant the request if it's made. But if you grant it for one party, you should grant it for the other party too. After the initial presentations, the appellant can reply. Reply can't present new evidence. The assessor can address the rebuttal. Time can be extended if determined by the Board. Each party has the opportunity to question the other through the Chair. And the Chair, it's a way to keep it from getting into some sort of argument. And the Chair can rule that questions are not germane if it seems to be going that way. Once the evidentiary phase is closed, the presentations, the rebuttals, questions, then the Board makes a motion and debates and decides the case. The Board members can ask questions too during this time. And if you're going to be asking questions, it's better to do it before the close of the evidentiary phase. Quite often, it's sort of a discretion of the Chair or how the will of the body goes. But quite often, the questions come during the presentation or at the end of when they've made their initial five-minute presentation. Evidence and argument. Both parties have the opportunity to present evidence and arguments to support their position. Both parties have the opportunity to see the evidence and arguments prior to the hearing. They have the opportunity to rebut the evidence and arguments at the hearing. Now, evidence and argument, the evidence is more to do with presentation of facts. And the argument is more to do with interpretation of the law. The findings of fact and conclusions of law. One way to think of this is findings of fact are determinations setting forth the facts found to be true at the hearing. Facts are those elements of evidence provided by either the appellant or the assessor that the Board found to be decisive or significant. Conclusions of law would be the decision you reach based on the legal premises for the decision. And examples, I've given a couple of examples. Finding of fact, Jane owns property A. That's a fact. It's either true. The assessor and the appellant agree that the building contains X square feet. The number of square feet in the building is a fact. That would be finding of fact. Uses of the property include X, Y, and Z. This many square feet of the property used for A or used for X, for Y, for Z. Those are facts. It's a quantifiable known determination. Conclusion of law. Whether the appellant met or failed to meet their burden, whether X use is exempt use, whether Y use is exempt use, those are conclusions based on the facts. You want to treat every case as though it's going to be appealed. The Court will review the record of the hearing. An appellant doesn't receive a new hearing in the Court. Well, there are times when that occurs, but normally, it's unusual for that to happen. What the Court, a reviewing Court needs to know is how you made your decision, what you based it on. If you place yourself in the Court's position and determine if you can understand why you made the decision that you made, then that's, you've done your job. You want to make sure your findings of fact relate to the issues that are brought up. And if the appellant has made a particular assertion as to why the property at issue should be exempt, your conclusions should address that argument or assertion or why that argument was or was not accepted. If the Court can't understand your findings and it's not clear from the recording of the meeting, then it'll probably send the case back to the Board to be heard again. So it's, in the long run, it's better to have as clear findings as possible. So in summary, the Board of Equalization serves a very important role as an impartial judge. Its administrative process is quicker, cheaper, better than just going to court. Board of Equalization members should disclose any conflicts or ex parte communications. The Board should make a determination of whether there's an exemption based on the facts presented at the hearing. And your determination should include all findings of fact that led to that decision, irrelevant facts. That's pretty much, pretty much summary of what I, excuse me, what I have. The written materials, I sort of stepped through the parts of the code that deal with these hearings and address those. I would love to answer questions if you have any questions.
Thank you, Scott. I have several questions. This is, I think it'll be my third or maybe fourth time going through this and still, you know, need a lot of support. But I will, I will open it up to my peers on the dais first for questions. Okay, I guess it's my show. Most of my questions are, I think, reflecting on my experience with it and just needing just some clarification on things. If a, if a member realizes mid-hearing, you know, like right in the middle of the hearing, that they may have been exposed to ex parte information, what should we do?
If it's, if it's not realized at first, but it's realized later, it's better to disclose it and get it on the record. You know, it's out of courtesy, if one of the parties is in mid-presentation, it's nice to wait until they finish their point. But I would suggest getting the attention of the Chair, disclosing, oh, they just said something that made me realize that may be my brother-in-law or whatever, whatever it is. I'd like to make sure that's disclosed and get a ruling from the Chair as to whether I should continue to participate. And then the Chair should, you know, if more detailed information is needed to make a decision, the Chair can ask for more information about the particular relationship or the communication, whatever it was. And then ask the parties, do you have any objection? Does either party have any objection? Then the Chair makes a ruling, just like you would do before the hearing starts.
Okay, that makes sense. If the appellant and the assessor both provide conflicting evidence, how should we weigh the credibility of that evidence without, you know, veering into personal judgment and our own interpretations?
Well, that's a very good question. It is the job of you as the finder of fact to weigh the credibility. It is, it is not uncommon for the parties to dispute to have different views of the facts. It may be a simple example, but if one says this building is 5,000 square feet and another says, no, we measured it, it's really 4,800 square feet. Well, there's a factual conflict and you have to determine which one you believe. It's not, you can't just split the difference and say, well, we'll say it's 4,900 square feet. But you would say, you know, finding of fact, we say it's 400, 4,000, 4,800 square feet because we believe that this source was a more reliable measurement. I mean, one of the things you could do in that context, if there is a factual conflict, is in questions, you could ask both parties, where'd you get that number? What's that based on? And then you're evaluating not so much the credibility of the person speaking as the reliability of the source of that evidence. In other factual conflict contexts, you may be able to ask questions which would assist you in determining which one are you going to believe. But you would, as the finders of fact, evaluate the credibility and make a conclusion as to what you think the actual facts are.
Thank you. I think I need some clarification too also on extending time. You know, under what circumstances can we extend time for parties to present or rebut? Should that time extension, should that always be offered equally?
I recommend that it be offered equally. I have seen a lot of hearings where it's offered, one side uses it and the other side doesn't. Because maybe they don't have as much to say. The, there's some just sort of practical pointers. It may be helpful at the beginning, before they start their presentations, to sort of reiterate, each side has five minutes for their presentations. Is either side going to be requesting more time? If so, how much? Why do you need that much time? And then make a ruling as to how much time you're going to give them and say, okay, each side's going to have 10 minutes or 15 minutes, whatever it is. You want to, if they have a good reason to have more time, you know, it's best to err on the side of giving them the opportunity to speak. But if it's, if it's, the, they don't really have much to say, then you end up just wasting everybody's time.
Thanks, just a couple more. Can we, can we challenge or question the assessor's methodology? Or should we rely on the appellant to raise those objections?
You should rely on, the appellant has the burden of proof. So walking in, it's presumed that everything's correct. Now, the standard of proof is preponderance of the evidence. So while the appellant has the burden, they have to, they're the ones that have to present some evidence showing there's a problem or an error. But it's not a high bar for proving an error. They just have to present evidence that a mistake was made. And if you were to, it's called suas ponti is a Latin term, by yourself come up with, well, we think the assessor did this and they shouldn't have done it, but it's not something in the appeal, well, that's that ex parte stuff. What gave the assessor notice that they had to be prepared to respond to this argument that was not even in the appeal? And, you know, it works both ways. Same thing with the, with the appellant. You can't come up with some new reason why the property may or may not be exempt that wasn't involved in the appeal. Because they didn't raise that issue, it's not in front of you.
Okay. Do, this has to do with, I guess, the process itself. Do we need to draft our formal findings of fact and conclusions during the meeting? Or is that something that we finalize later?
You can do it either way. I have, I have seen, well, my experience with the Board of Equalization for valuations in Kodiak has at times been that they, drafting the findings, sort of, you know, afterwards a recess into executive session and put together some findings and then maybe save them on the record. It, I have seen other communities where one or both parties have submitted recommended findings. I have seen, sometimes in planning commission, for example, maybe the staff is recommending X action and they submit drafted findings that support that. And they say, well, if you want to decide it the other way, you need to come up with your own findings. You can either work on coming up with the findings at the meeting or you can verbalize the findings, the basis for the decision, have the clerk and I draft those into written findings, which you then meet again and formally approve. You have, yes, and leave it, you have 30 days after the hearing to actually make a decision. So you don't have to decide it that night. And it's not uncommon to, you know, have the written findings prepared and then reconvene and formally adopt them later. But, you know, you also, if your statements have been fairly complete and clear, you can even delegate it to the clerk, that these are our findings, our decision. The clerk's going to write it up and the Chair will sign it and will get it distributed. We don't have to meet again.
Great, that helps a lot.
We have flexibility.
Okay, good. My last question then is, so after the findings, all that stuff is approved and submitted. What is the standard of review if the appellant challenges our decision in court? Is this, is it a new hearing or is it just a review of the record?
It's a review of the record. And there's a different review for findings of fact and for legal conclusions. Your findings of fact are going to be subject to a deferential review. If there's evidence in the record that supports your findings of fact, the Court's not going to set those aside. If you make findings of fact that there's no evidence about that topic, the Court might set it aside. Now, on conclusions of law, if you're wrong on the law, the Court may reverse that, but they're not going to send it back. What would cause them to send it back would be if there was either a due process violation or if the record was not complete enough for them to figure out if you had a valid basis for your decision.
All right, thank you, that helps. Any other questions? All right, well, thank you very much, Scott, I appreciate it.
Yeah, the only other comment I'd have is you only have one case scheduled this year. It's scheduled for next Thursday. And I will be available via Zoom. And my role will be to provide procedural advice to the Assembly of Citizens of Board of Equalization. I will not be an advocate for either side. The, it'll be the appellant and the assessor making the presentations.
Great, thank you again.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
I'm going to go ahead and sign off, Nova.
All right, thank you, bye.
Okay, and thank you, Seema, for coming down also. All right, third agenda item, review of FY26 nonprofit funding applications. Let's pull, let's pull up this 200-page omnibus. So we have this on tonight's agenda. It will be also on the 31st work session. And then, and then again at the regular meeting on August 7th. I think that's right, sounds right. But so this is just the initial conversations about the, about the applications. And to get further into our process, I guess, as we review everything. I will go ahead and start off with my many conflicts of interest. So under consideration tonight are three organizations that I've declared conflicts of interest in the past. The first is with UAA Kodiak College. I am a faculty member at Kodiak College. Actually, I'm a faculty member with the University of Alaska. And I just happen to teach and love to teach with Kodiak College. The grant money that's being requested is not for faculty salaries or even for classes. It's for financial relief for students and other kinds of relief for students. My salary is set by a legislature-approved CBA. And my pay is unaffected at all by this. And obviously, with my work with KMXT, I will ask to be, you know, I will not be participating in the conversations about KMXT. And then with the Kodiak Arts Council, I do a And then with the Kodiak Arts Council, I do a summer camp every year. We're actually in the middle of it right now as a contracted independent contractor, as a theater artist. And I get a stipend that's, that really just comes from the tuition revenue, but I'm happy to also recuse myself, or excuse myself from conversation specifically about the Arts Council. With Kodiak College, though, the attorney opinion has been that, that there is no financial conflict there. And I believe the past, over the past two years, the Assembly has agreed with that. But I will excuse myself from any conversation about KMXT or the Arts Council when those are brought up specifically and talk about everything as a whole. I will, that's what I would like to do, if it's okay with Assembly. I will pass that on to our most senior member, Larry Ladue, if he would like to make a ruling on that.
I do not believe you have a conflict.
Would anybody like to appeal? Okay, all right. Thanks. Before we move on, are there any other conflicts of interest? Okay, all right. I just asked. I have a couple of comments before we start. I'd like to thank everybody who came and testified during the public comments. Some big things I'd like us to keep in mind is all, all sectors of these nonprofit organizations have been hit hard over the past six months and will continue to be hit hard for, for months and maybe years to come. When we think about health services, you know, Providence is on that list of rural hospitals in danger of closing due to Medicare, Medicaid cuts. For SNAP, many working families are going to see an average of $146 or $126 a month cut from SNAP benefits. And that's even if you have one family member who works. So our families are going to hurt from that. There's, Alaska also has a very high payment error rate. In fact, we're number one in the nation for a high error rate. And this new legislation, federal legislation that has passed is going to penalize states for their error rates. And so those costs will also be passed on to the state and the state will, will have to cut services even further for, for SNAP. NIH, FEMA, National Weather Service, NEH, IMLS, NEA, all of those cuts across safety, emergency services, health services, culture and education support, in addition to the large grants that even the school district has, has lost. So I think it's, for me, it's more important than ever about leveraging local contributions. It's more important than ever to secure those other grants and other investment opportunities. Nonprofit investment in Kodiak, according to McDowell, for every $1 we give, we get $2 in return in economic activity. And that's multiplied even further when those, the grant money that we give is leveraged for even more grant money from other organizations and, and government. So, and then SNAP also brings in $1.54 for every dollar spent. So for me, yes, it's about charity, it's about quality of life, but it's also a really smart economic investment as, as we go through these. So, so with that, how would you like to proceed? Or if anybody else has opening comments about where they stand generally, I will just open it up. I guess we'll first hear from, from Amy.
Thank you. To help the discussion tonight, I made a nonprofit table of contents. It's in front of you, so if anyone talks about any individual application, you can find it with ease. You'll see in there, there are four summary pages for each of the types of table contents. There's two things I wanted to update. You heard tonight that there's two Kodiak reentry applications in there. The one that's found on page 176 with a $25,000 request, they asked that that one got moved to the Health and Social Services section. And the second one that is $20,000, they asked that that one stays in the opioid funds request. At the back of your manager's report tonight, there are several Excel spreadsheets. Those spreadsheets have some historical information. It's the same thing that's in your packet, except there is an addition of the average that those different applicants have gotten over the years and then different averages of the budget amounts. So you asked for a starting place for discussion, so that would be your starting place just based off averages.
Thank you, Amy. All right, let's get started. Ryan.
Thank you. So I'd like to have a general discussion on what the Assembly's sentiment is on one of the requesters. We currently just went through some BoE training for a potential litigation, our post-litigation if the BoE fails. We do have an applicant alluded to museum and archaeological repository on this list. I guess I'd like to know what the Assembly's feeling is on funding a potential litigant.
Just an opinion. I don't believe there's any correlation at all between what they do for our community and their mission and what could happen down the road with regard to any legal things. I just think they're completely separate. People have a right to appeal a decision without any kind of retribution. Just an opinion.
Yes, Bo.
Yeah, I appreciate the question being brought up and I agree with Dr. Ladue that I don't view these, I don't view that as a conflict. It's a distinct service they're providing to the community and, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with it and comfortable.
Ryan.
Well, then we just shaved three hours off of last year's conversation from a previous applicant with a previous scenario, so we are learning. So I appreciate the conversation. Thank you.
Yeah, I, yeah, I agree with, with what was said too and yeah, we'll just follow the rules and do our best job. All right. Anyone else? Larry.
Just a clarification. If I look at the totals here for colleges and libraries, we're short $28,000 versus what we budgeted and what people are asking. Is that correct? I'm looking at the charts at the very bottom of.
Yes.
Yes.
And if I look at education, culture and recreation, we're short $30,000 over requests in the amount we budgeted.
No, we're over.
Or over? Okay.
If it's in parentheses.
Oh, there's good news in here. And under health and social services, we're down, we're short $75,000. Am I reading that correctly?
You are, and that will bump up to $100,524 once we move that reentry up there into the correct category because they're moving their request that's on page 176 to health and social services.
So our choices before us tonight, as always, are to reallocate money, either increase the amount we've budgeted or to make decisions on cuts.
Yes, Scott.
Madam Manager, is there a way to spend the $35,411 in the opioid funds by directing some like camp and reentry into that category? Or reentry is there?
There is a, a specific list of what those can be used for. So those, camp is already in there, right? Camp has done both, but there are, is, there are specific things that those can be used for. So I am hesitant to say yes because I'm not sure what all of those details are and what they're asking for.
Can we learn the details at some point?
Absolutely.
Oh, good.
Ryan.
Yeah, I was going to echo that. This is the first year that we're actually tapping into this fund, so I think it would be a really good idea for us to refresh what the restrictions or covenants are with the distributions of those. And I know that we alluded to that potential on the grant applications and we put the onus of responsibility on the grant applicant. However, I also think that we need to just monitor that from our position as the disperson.
I have a couple of things. Let's see anybody else with their hand raised right now. So one, one idea we have for Fund 100-191 for colleges and libraries, we see that the requests are over the $100,000 budgeted. We do have a Fisheries Economic Development Project Fund that we've been putting fisheries' disaster money into for, and we've talked about this with the Fisheries Work Group, to use that money for, yeah, economic development activities, workforce activities related to fisheries. I think one idea is to use that fund to cover the Kodiak Seafood and Marine Science Center's requests, since their requests are very clearly about fisheries workforce development. So that's an idea that, that I had to, yes, Bo.
Yeah, I'll just pile on to that. I think that's a great idea. Those, those funds are ready to be used there, there for that exact purpose. Those disaster relief funds are to reignite economic development for that particular sector, so this works really well. I don't see any scenario where this wouldn't pass the red face test. I think it's a very innovative and creative idea and we should do it.
And to add a little bit more, in that fund is $98,437. So that would take a little chunk out of that, but also I think you can see on the spreadsheet, this is the historical funding, but I believe for the past three years, the Marine Science Center, they barely used half of, of every, of every fund that we've developed. And I believe they refund.
They're looking at refunding just over $9,000 this year.
Yes. So I think we could be safe that all of that money probably won't be used. So I, my question, maybe Amy, is if we were to use the Fisheries Economic Fund for this and there is a refund, that refund would go just right back into the fund? Or refunds, how do, how do those refunds work?
I would have to ask Dora, but I'm assuming it would go back into the general fund because that's where the money came from last year. So if we take money out of the general fund and we don't spend it all, it goes back into the general fund.
And specifically, this like would go back to the project fund?
Oh, so for, so if we, if we took this.
For this $28,000.
Yes. If we took this $28,000 out of that fund and then it came back to us, it'd go back in that fund.
Back in that fund. Okay. I think I saw Ryan, Scott.
So my concern with that, and I, I love the idea, I agree with you guys, to me, that's changing the rules of the game as we went. And so if you're looking at pulling money from another fund that is not part of the original grant funding application process, we've changed the rules of engagement, in my opinion. And there might have been other applicants that would pursue that other $90,000 fund. So I, I would just caution us, unless I'm totally, based on that look, I might be misunderstanding this, but to me, we had a pool of grant funds and now we're saying, oh, wait, we've got this other money over here, let's pay this grant with that. To me, that's changing the rules of engagement and we probably need to tread lightly on that.
Scott.
One of the things they're doing a lot of at Seafood and Marine Science Center is on kelp, on mariculture and processing that. Would the fisheries money work for kelp? Kelp aren't fish.
Because that money is not designated when we get it, the Assembly can choose to do what they want with it. That's why we have to pass it by ordinance when it comes in.
Okay. And to Mr. Scherritt's comment, I don't remember any of the others working on fish. Maybe they are, but I didn't remember that.
Bo. And then Larry.
Thank you. Thanks for that, Mr. Scherritt. I suppose we have some research would need to be done to see if that's something we can, if we can allocate those funds kind of somewhat haphazardly. So maybe that's something if Madam Manager could help us with that, to make sure we're going to be okay there. Another thing to keep in mind is despite not spending all of their funds this year, they did lose a substantial amount of money through NIOSH. Their, their federal grants got not just cut, they're completely wiped out. So that's a large amount of money that they use to train our fishermen and drill conductors who are vessel operators at no cost to our industry, our local industry participants. So they don't have that funding this year, so I think we should do the full amount and especially if it, if it can, if we can use that fund in this way and we can get the money back that's unspent, back into that very specific fund. I think that'd be a really good approach if, if we can do that, to Mr. Scherritt's point, without kind of rewriting the rules.
Larry, it's okay, I'm going to take Steve first because he hasn't spoken yet.
Having listened to Assembly Scherritt speak, I think he's correct that this was set up and money was allocated and to bring some more in from a different source is going to create a problem. I think what we're going to have to do is just reject their amount, but at the same time tell them to apply for money from that fund and then we could approve that separately. And that would eliminate the conflict of bringing money in from somewhere else.
Okay. Larry.
There is no rule or ordinance that prohibits us from allocating money from the general fund or any other fund as we choose fit. It doesn't have to happen at the budget time, we can always add. And I think, you know, the discussion that we had when we started, we talked about using the opioid funds. We all agreed that times are tough and that would be a good use to increase support when it's needed the most. In fact, the world is very different, or the financial world, if you will, with regard to grants, is very different than it was two weeks ago for these nonprofits. The needs are great. One of the things I would like to see, and this probably would take an ordinance, would be that when there is unspent money, when it is returned, it goes back into a special nonprofit fund that we could use to build up for these kinds of things that we need. But I don't have a problem with utilizing funds. It's legal, as far as I understand it, we have that authority to help meet the needs that have arisen within our community. It's different than it was and I think that we need to try to be there. And if we could allocate funds that are available for that kind of purpose, then we should do that. And so I appreciate the concern raised, but I don't see it as a blocking point for us to do this.
Thank you, Larry. Amy, do you have direction enough to look into this for us? All right. Thank you. Thank you, Ryan. Any other discussions about the college and library? Is it okay, we just look at the next, the next section, the edu, wait, is that the next one on here?
Health and Social Services.
Health and Social Services is really the next one. Yes. I think I'd like to look at, yeah, Health and Social Services first. It's a, it's a bigger ones in there, if there's anything specific on there. There is a $75,000 deficit there. Yes, Ryan.
Yeah, this is one where we, at least in, in the short time I've been on the Assembly, we spend a lot of time talking about, and there's, there's no easy answers, there's no easy discussion. Everyone is a worthy recipient of the full requested amount. What I particularly find satisfactory to me is when we get people that come in, present. We get people that come in and report. We get people that come in and sit through our meetings and our BoE training so that they can get the last comment again about trying to get the full funding request. So those, to, those people that have come in and testified through public comment, I, I always like to advocate for a full request for those. We do have six, six that were here today based off of the nonprofit table of contents that was provided, that I would encourage the other nonprofits over the next couple meeting sessions to come in and advocate for their request as well. And, and again, we've had these conversations about, Assembly Member Ames brought this up, is even the $5,000 requesters have them come in once a year. I think that's a fantastic idea. But when we just get people that request, don't come in, don't ask for it, and my comment last week was a nonprofit that's last week was a nonprofit that said, I'm not coming, and you guys just give me what I want. I will be voting for a zero fund for that when the time comes, so just to be transparent. Thanks.
We don't, on a nonprofit application, have any language that asks, requests, or even requires people to show up and give us a verbal or oral report or presentation? Okay. Thank you. Other questions?
Well, sorry, but you did talk about in next year's funding cycle, instead of just having a grant, especially for the larger ones, having it more of a contract, kind of like what we do with Discover Kodiak, having deliverables?
Yeah.
So absent the approach of allocating via, you know, extra effort, I agree, it's, I think it's, even if it's not required, folks know we have limited resources here. And in this case, for this particular fund, $75,000 deficit, I didn't do the math yet, but that's a large amount of money, you know, roughly 40% or so. What's our Plan B? If everyone comes in and says, you know, advocates for their program or their nonprofit, provides some data, asks to fund the full ask, you know, what is our next course of action, just to be ready for that? So I think we should have some discussion on what that looks like. That's a big deficit to overcome. Do we do a, do we do an equitable approach, where whatever that percentage is, that's a reduced deadline across, just straight down the column, everyone's reduced by 40% or whatever that number is, for, you know, just being equitable? I do think we should discuss what Plan B looks like.
Yeah, thank you. I agree with that, too. Let me get you this thing right. When we added in $30,000 during the budget discussions, we didn't designate which, exactly which nonprofit funds to put them in, and it looks like Amy and Dora have split it, $15,000 to Health and Social Services and $15,000 to Education, Culture and Recreation. And we've done this before, we can move money from those two lot, from Education, Culture and Recreation, we can move that $30,000 unspent to the Health and Social Services. Correct, Amy? Sorry. I should have clarified that I was asking you a question.
Sorry. Yes, you can absolutely move those around. We've done that in the past. The way that, I know we're not there yet, but the way that Education, Culture and Recreation is set up this year, there's, if everyone was fully funded to their ask, there's $30,200 left over, and so that is something you could easily move over into this one that we're discussing right now and have, instead of being $100,000 upside down, only be 70.
Yes, Ryan?
So to the same vein, I'm just going to speak in broad numbers and just throw a proposal out, and that proposal would just be contingent on three underlying factors that we've already discussed. So moving the overage from the Education, Culture and Recreation, you've got a $30,000 surplus, moving that over into the Health and Social Services would be move number one. Move number two would be finding out the validity of funding the UAF Kodiak Seafood and Marine Seafood Center. I love the idea of funding it through that fund, I just want to make sure it's legit. That would remove that, we could fully fund the college, which I support, and now we've got a $40,000, roughly a $40,000 deficit, where we've got opioid funds that we can potentially move that around. I think collectively, as an assembly, we need to decide whether or not we're okay with exceeding the budget amounts with the, like, hey, do we want to move funds from the general fund to cover a $10,000 variance or $20,000 variance if these aren't able to be moved? But based on the discussions that we've had and the willingness that everybody seems to be under, I think if we can fund with the opioid funds and fund with that, sorry, I'm not speaking intelligently about it, the seafood grant or that seafood fund, this is about, this is almost a balanced budget at this point. You could fully fund everybody, so...
Yes, thank you, Ryan. Anyone else? Larry?
I was just wondering, how much money is being returned that was unspent from last year?
Just over $9,000.
From my perspective, that could be, you know, help equalize what we're talking about, too, because it's money that we weren't expecting as revenue when you developed our budget, because we didn't know how much we were getting back at the time. So it's sort of revenue, to a certain extent, that was unexpected. You add it to the numbers that Ryan brought up, we're almost right there.
Is that, I know Dora's not here.
She is here, and she'll come up later, because we have a budget amendment ordinance, so we can ask her then, but that's fiscal year '25 money, and when we return fiscal year '25 money, it goes back to fiscal year '25 and not into fiscal year '26, and I don't know the ins and outs of that, so we'll definitely want to ask her that question.
So if we, if that's true, though, we could write, we could change the ordinance to say any refunded grant money can be, will be applied to the current fiscal year, or something like that?
I need to, Dora will have to give us those details, I just don't know.
It's all language, we can change anything.
I think that you absolutely can, I would just want her to provide the language.
Okay, let's look at Education, Education, Culture, Recreation. My initial question is, there is a $5,000 cap on this one, correct? Okay, so that would mean that there's probably another 11,000, or, I'm sorry, 6,000. If Hope Community is, can only get 5,000, and then, well, Teen Court, that's in kind, isn't it?
Not anymore, they don't occupy our buildings anymore.
Anyway, that's, that might be another $6,300 to move over. Questions about this fund? Scott?
For the first time, we have a middle school PTSA. I didn't read further about this. What is this?
If I remember correctly, they're asking for two things. One, I think it's about $2,000 for food, to help feed some of the kids who need either services from the nurse or services from a counselor. A lot of these kids, it's a really interesting narrative, a lot of the kids that come in there, they are, you know, sometimes they act out because they are hungry, and so it's for snacks. They got a grant, I believe, was it from the Kodiak Community Foundation last year to fund those, to fund that food, and so they're asking us this year for that. And I think that the remainder of that was to go to a mural project on the retaining wall on Powell.
Yeah, it's $1,000 for their private food pantry project and $2,500 for the art meal project.
Oh, I had it flipped. Okay.
Is it, I mean, it's got school here, is it connected to the school district?
So, oh, go ahead.
It's an after-school, the art meal project is an after-school club.
Oh, okay.
And PTSA is different from PTA. The PTA is, and Larry might know more about this, PTA is part of a national organization, it's like the Red Cross. PTSAs, though, are individual nonprofit, school-based organizations.
PTSA stands for Parent Teacher Student Organization. It's really a sort of expansion of the PTA. Neither one of them are connected to school in terms of their budget.
Exactly.
They're both indicated in independent agencies.
Yeah. All right, seeing no more, let's move on into the opioid. If there are any further questions there, or requests of Amy and staff? Okay, all right, look at that. We'll move...
I have a question.
Oh, yes, Scott?
Does Brother Francis ask for 25 in the health section and an additional 20 here?
Yes.
Yes. And same for Camp and Kodiak reentry. KCHT only has an opioid application here. I do have to admit that I thought that when we were talking about using the opioid settlement funds, that that was going to, like, supplant some of the dollars in the Health and Social But if we can make this work, let's make this work. Bo?
Yeah, I think we heard, you know, I view more than sufficient testimony on that, we have more than just one area that these nonprofits are addressing. They have a large need for helping folks that are dealing with addiction and recovery and their families, associated family struggles with that, and then they also provide all the other services for homeless folks, people who need something to eat, place to sleep, people who need help with other issues. So I think I'm quite comfortable with the two different requests, because they're addressing two different needs in the community that are great.
Ryan?
Yeah, I echo that sentiment as well. One of the points during the testimony that resonated with me, and I actually haven't been able to shake it, is the 10% of the occupants were veterans, so I would really like to dive deep into that as a veteran advocate. I want to help solve that as well, and there are additional funds for that through the state of Alaska. But I do believe that these funds and these requests are valid in their requested funding groups, so I would definitely support them as well.
Steve?
A couple of points. One, I'd still be interested in whether the opioid fund could relieve part of their first request. Does it fit into their restrictions or not, thus reducing that number some? Where I live, my scenic view is the Brother Francis shelter. I see it every morning, I see it every night, I see the number of people it serves. Because of our housing problem, I see some of the cars there that are canneries, that are other working places, and, but can't find or can't afford housing, it's a valuable So yes, I would like to find ways to fund both of these, and as I said, I'd like to look in a little whether some of that first request, what they use it for, would qualify for the opioid situational fund, but I can't, I don't know the details, so I can't answer. Oh, we're getting an answer?
I don't have your exact details, Mr. Ames, but what I will say is that the opioid fund, like, we're not going to have 122,000, sorry, it says 119, but we really have 122,877, we got more money. The companies that have to pay in can do a big lump sum, they can do a small, over 20 years, so it's very inconsistent funding. So if we spend it all this year, there might be $10,000 in it next year, and I don't know if that matters or not, and you're thinking if we want to be able to fund some of this in future years for these programs who might need it, but I think that that's something to take into consideration, that the money coming in is very sporadic.
Yeah, Steve, continue.
Well, thanks for that explanation. Do we have, do we know a present balance in it that would be available, not counting on future payments?
Right now, there's $122,877 in the fund.
Okay, and so the question is, how much of that are we willing to draw down, not knowing future infusion?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I remember we had, when the opioid settlement first came up, and we had talked, the Assembly had talked about how we're going to use those funds, and I think there are some really good points about not, about not extending the life of the fund, but that organizations can do better with a big chunk than with just, you know, than with just a little, a little bit every year. Because we were even thinking about, like, pooling our money with other communities around Alaska to see if we can, like, build something bigger with all that money. I don't think that quite worked out. But Amy, I see that Dora has joined us. Did y'all want to ask questions of Dora now before we move on from nonprofit, or just hit her up next time, or wait to hear back? Ryan's like, Ryan sat up. Ryan's posture just went. Amy, is this okay?
Sure.
Okay, all right. Ryan?
Can we have some blank checks?
What?
So we have some questions. The very first question, and if you need to look into it, we are all okay with it, because we are in uncharted territory. I'm going to need some help identifying what this fund is that's got a $96,000 balance.
So, Dora, this is the Fisheries Economic Development Project Fund.
I will also say that Dora's been watching the meeting in her office.
Oh, oh, well then.
Just to help you all out, okay.
So $78,000 of that was a, I can't remember the organization, Pacific?
Pacific States Fishery Disaster Fund.
There we go, thank you. To compensate us for fishery losses, there was no particular strings, it was revenue replacement, so it can be used for anything, which is why, as Amy indicated, we had to accept it by ordinance. There's another $20,000 in there from, I think it was the year before last, or maybe last year?
Fiscal year '24 holdover, because we didn't spend it.
Yeah, that we wanted to set it aside in a project to do future fishery projects. Does that answer your question? Okay.
And I think that, if I may, kind of, our concern was, we just wanted to make sure that if we decided to award the Marine Science Center this $28,000, we can tap into that fund, which is about fisheries economic development.
Yes.
There wouldn't be any...
The, your, the resolution that you're going to do for assignment of the award of the money, you'll just indicate that that money will come from that fund. And like Amy said, for the college, when they returned the money from last year's assignment that wasn't used, it will go into the general fund for last year, because I'll have to set it up as a receivable, because it was last year. But it is there in the general fund to be used, and if you decide to augment the amount that you have for nonprofits right now, we can do that on a quarterly budget amendment and change the amount that you assign to nonprofits to include that extra money.
Okay, and that's 9,600, is, I think that was what they're looking to refund. Any other? Larry?
Sounds to me like we're pretty close to being there.
Yeah.
And from my point of view, this has been the best conversation that I've had in six years on the Assembly, and so far, the shortest.
Which is why it's the best.
Ryan, is this germane? Go for it.
Could be. Last year, I made the appeal to the Assembly members, I'm going to make the same appeal this year, as kind of the closing sediment, since it sounds like we're wrapping this conversation up. Last year, I took my stipend, and I gave this to nonprofits that applied, that I felt had a worthy cause. Last year, I gave four nonprofits, $1,500 apiece, which totaled a $6,000 stipend that were awarded. That was KMXT, Brother Francis, Women's Crisis Center, and Camp. I would just appeal that if anybody's testimonies tonight or in the next couple meetings appeal to you guys, I want to reiterate that they will always accept additional funds. So, no, I don't believe that was a germane comment, but that does conclude my statement. Thanks.
Thank you, Ryan. Okay, well then, let's move on to packet review. First, I'm going to make sure I got the right day. So our regular meeting next week will follow the Board of Equalization meeting, that will happen first. And then up we have, and the public hearing ordinance number FY 2026-03, amending various sections of Kodiak Island Borough Code Title 17, zoning to define pet-related uses and to locate these uses in specific zoning districts as either permitted uses or conditional uses. Amy?
Thank you. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing... The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on the proposed code amendment on May 21st, 2025, and voted five to zero to recommend approval of the code amendment to the Assembly. The commission's recommendation with findings was organized into Planning and Zoning Commission Resolution Number Fiscal Year 2025-011. The assigned resolution is attached to, in this, in your packet tonight. Title 17 currently permits pet boarding facilities in rural neighborhood commercial district and as a conditional use in the urban neighborhood commercial district. Staff researched the use and determined the code was lacking both definitions to define pet-related uses and that the current districts where the uses were allowed were both inadequate and not in conformance with best planning practices. This change is going to cover a variety of sections in Title 17. Our Community Development Director, Chris French, is here tonight to walk you through the changes. If you want to be, walk through them. I know that you heard them the last two meetings. So if you have questions, great. If you want Chris to walk through, that's also good, whatever. Whatever you need.
Yeah.
What would you like?
I know we've seen this before. I think we're good. I thought I heard someone groaning down there. Okay. Next up, contract number FY 2026-02, Electrical Services Contract with Nodak Electric and Construction. Who's that? Cody?
Thank you, and Cody's here tonight. The Engineering and Facilities Department was tasked with, is tasked with maintaining all borough facilities. Our previous annual electrical contractor was offered a second extension as allowed in the contract. However, KIB declined it because of increased labor costs. They were going to go up 30% this year, and so we thought it was appropriate to go back out to bid. E F staff prepared an updated invitation to bid and published it on June 11th. The bid opening occurred on July 2nd. Staff received and reviewed two bid submissions and determined that both contractors were responsible bidders. Nodak Electric and Construction Incorporated was deemed the lowest cost responsible bidder. And you can see all the information in your packet tonight. And our Engineering Facilities Director, Acting Cody, is here tonight to answer questions.
Any questions? Ryan.
Why did you laugh when you saw that?
I was just still talking, that's all.
Okay, Cody. So I know we got some work to do on some code revisions. Local contractors, let's have the discussion if, if you are prepared. I know that we have a local bidder's preference, but within that local bidder's preference, we also don't have verbiage of brick and mortar requirements. Comma, this is a Wasilla-based contractor. I'm concerned on a couple of different points. Number one, responsiveness. You know, per diem charges, things that might not necessarily have been disclosed in the bid. And these small details always get you. Can you help me feel comfortable on this?
Yes, so I guess to start, I too feel slightly uncomfortable going into a contract with a business that is not local. We did reach out to the vendor to make sure they were aware of the location of the service requirements. And then essentially, response times and things that are clearly identified in the contract. They are, I'm like inquiring a term contract for the base is what they're here for. They're stationed out of the airport is what I'm understanding. And so they have a gentleman that they said that's on island. However, when we researched the code before we issued this for your approval, the only thing I could find for brick and mortar is in Chapter 365, decimal zero two zero, which is qualifications in lieu of bonding. And so I started researching around the state and I've worked for two other municipalities. And as Mr. Sherrett says, the, they typically have some sort of local requirement for a services or term contract because that's the intent is that that person can come and be available 24/7. As of the July 2nd conversation with the Nodak representative, they will be available. There is no per diem, there is no travel time. We made that all clear, as clear could be. We do have provisions in the contract for termination. And then response, work response time. So it's in special condition three two. And so the contractor has to respond within three business days. And then maintenance shall begin corrective work no later than 8:00 a.m. of the second day, following receipt of a description, a direction for corrective action. And then emergency work is a 24-hour service in which they've told us they would provide us with a cell phone for a 24-hour response. However, again, I, I have contractors in my office almost daily, local contractors that have worked with the borough for a long time. And I think you all know since my time here, I've been working to make our procurement and engineering facilities more transparent. With that becomes risks and we identify areas in our code that need improvement. And so we have mechanisms contractually that if they don't meet the contract for this specific contract, we can terminate it and go back out or look for local options. Local electric was our other bidder. They did exceed the 10% local bidder preference. But I am all ears for recommendations or anybody that's willing to support a code revision.
Did you have a follow-up, Ryan?
Yeah, so.
Oh, I'm, I'm so sorry. I really hate to interrupt you. I do want to give Steve a, a chance to speak about a potential conflict of interest, if that's okay.
I work for the other bidder and therefore I should probably be excused.
Are you asking me to rule?
Yes.
Yes, I, I think you probably should be excused. We've had this come up in the past, so unless, anyone would like to appeal that decision, there might be a conflict of interest. So thank you, Steve. Okay, sorry about that, Ryan. Please continue.
We'll talk quieter so he doesn't hear. Okay, so this is kind of the precursor to the assembly. Here's the notice. There's going to be some code revisions coming down. I want to work with Cody to get those code revisions. It's been no secret that the procurement at the Kodiak Island Borough, it needs some work. And that is one of the reasons that I ran for this seat. And so I, I will be bringing these forward. Cody, I'd love to sit down with you and Amy through you to be able to get those yellow sheeted in and up before my 14 months is gone. So I really appreciate the exchange that we had in advance of this conversation, not to prep you for the conversation, but it made me feel a little more comfortable with moving this forward, knowing that the devil is in the details. And I appreciate the, the, I guess, tenacity that you guys have in making sure that we're protected. That, that means a lot. So thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Anyone else? All right, thank you. Thanks, Cody. Oh, thanks, Bo. Let's see. Okay, next ordinance for introduction. Ordinance number FY 2025-02C, amending ordinance number FY 2025-02, fiscal year 2025 budget, by amending budgets to account for various revenues that are over budget, providing for additional expenditures and moving funds between projects. All right, Amy.
Thank you. This ordinance is the final fiscal year 2025 budget amendment. These changes cover items of circumstances not known or expected during the initial creation of the 2025 budget. It also covers projects that have been closed out. And in our last, during our last interim audit, we had one of those folks here that helped us close out some of our projects. So that was a wonderful thing. So there are 11 different requests, so I'm just going to walk you through so you understand what they are. The first one is a transfer of $8,978.59 from the general fund to the capital projects. Kodiak Fisheries Research Center Facility Fuel Oil Spill Fund to cover expenses. Sorry, fuel spill is when those tanks were overflowed by a company that were not reimbursed. The second is a transfer of $100,000 within the general fund from the Borough Management Department to the Engineering Facilities Department due to project and staffing changes in the Engineering Facilities Department. The third is the same, a transfer from, within the general fund of $120,000 from the Community Development Department to Engineering Facilities due to project and staffing changes in Engineering Facilities Department. So the Community Development Department and the Management Department were under budget while the Engineering and Facilities Department was over budget. A lot of that had to do with staffing. When staff members are not in office and they take vacation time or sick time, all of their salary comes from their home department. And if that employee's salary is normally allocated to like the hospital, the landfill, KFRC, then the home department takes the whole burden of that whole salary while they're out. And so it caused some problems inside of that budget. So those transfers, it's just within the general fund, so it has no effect to the bottom line of the general fund. The fourth one is a transfer of $26,165.64 from Building and Grounds to the Capital Project KIB Air Conditioner Removal and Replacement due to completion of the project. This is the air conditioner that was above the IT space that has leaked for years. We have finally removed, got them a new air conditioner and patched the roof. So that's done. Number five is a return of $844.17 from the Capital Project Emergency Borough Boiler Repair Project to Buildings and Grounds due to the completion of the project. There was just money there that needed to be returned. Also a return of $51,234.04 from the Capital Fund Project from Peterson Roof Replacement back to Building and Grounds due to the completion of that project. A transfer of $300,000 from within the Renewal and Replacement Fund, Islandwide UST Removal Replacement Work to continue on UST removal. This is going to be our continued work, our monitoring from the fuel spill out in Carluck and those new DEC regulations that are going to cause increased monitoring out there before we can hope to transfer that school someday. Number eight is a transfer of $125,000 from the Renewal and Replacement Fund to the Capital Project Fund Mill Bay Beach Stairs Replacement Project. We're just putting money in that project to get those stairs replaced. Number nine is a transfer of $22,068.01 from the Solid Waste Disposal and Collection Fund to the Capital Projects Fund in the Baylor Floor Overlay Replacement Project. That will help us close out that project. 10 is a transfer of $750,000 from the Kodiak Fisheries Research Center Fund to the Capital Projects Fund Kodiak Fisheries Research Center Decontamination Project. That is so we can get that project out on the street for, so we can meet those DEC requirements on decontamination. And finally, a transfer of $250,000 from the Kodiak Fisheries Research Center Fund to the Capital Projects Fund for the seawater intake pump replacement project, which you know about. And we are down to 15 weeks on our count of waiting for those pumps. So you'll see in the ordinance, there are several different things. But that's pretty much the text of it as you walk through it, the 11 things. And then on the back in section two, it gives you the transferring out and transferring in different funds and project numbers as we walk through that last amendment. That's a lot of information. Are there any questions?
Looks like no questions. Thank you. Okay, that's it for packet. Oh, it's a thumbs up. That's it for packet review. Manager's comments.
Thank you. I met with Kodiak Island, or I'm meeting at Kodiak Island Housing Authority this week with Keaha, Shunac, and Kana to continue reviewing the opportunity of relocating Shunac's daycare program to North Star. I invited Deputy Presiding Officer Griffin to attend a meeting next week so that we have some assembly attendance at these so we can hear about the different opportunities. Also, I met with Superintendent Mika this week and discussed the school district. And there, what they were looking at, the real cost of keeping North Star open was. I included that in your packet tonight. When we first met with that North Star group, we walked out thinking it was going to be about $90,000. And the school district right now is at 207. And as we go through those line items, there are several things that we probably wouldn't use. They spend $47,000 a year on security cameras. And their internet is almost $8,000. And so we would do those things differently if we were going to use security cameras up there. And their numbers also don't include insurance. So we, as we meet with that North Star group, we're going to have to work out some more of those numbers. Wednesday, July 16th is the first walkthrough as the school district starts the transfer of the building over to the Kodiak Island Borough. So hopefully, we will get that North Star group together sooner than later so we can start working out some of those details. Cody and I met with Olivera Wilson, who is the new CEO at KCHC, to go over their possible future expansion plans. They have just under $8 million in a grant that needs to be obligated by September 2026. So we went and met with the Acting Hospital Administrator Lori Riddle and Olivera and talked to them about their plans. Cody did a lot of research on KCHC and how that was built and is our subject matter expert on it and is Providence's subject matter expert on it. So we're really lucky that he's on our side and has all the information that he does. KCHC is going to get together a concept design. And when that's ready, we'll bring it to the assembly. And that's what Providence will bring to their leadership as well. Spoiler alert, they want to build up, so a second level on their space, which will require an exoskeleton. It is something that they have talked to the original architects about. And so we're very interested in seeing what that cost estimate is going to look like. I also attended this meeting, this week, a meeting with the Kodiak Rodeo and Fairgrounds Board of Directors. They are coming to the end of a 55-year lease, started in 1970. It expires on November 3rd of this year. So we've been working with them and Scottburn Erickson to make sure that we're bringing that lease into the correct decade with our new terms. They have questions about handling of waste. They have 36 horses out there now that they didn't have at the beginning of that lease. So there are some questions about that. There's nothing in that initial lease about a caretaker living on that property, although it's been done for a very long time. And they also have questions about how long they can possibly make that initial term. When they're trying to get grant money for improvements, they want that lease to be as long as possible. And so we're working with them on all those details. We have a draft that we're going back and forth on. We're going to add a couple of more things about what Alaska State rules we want them to follow as far as manure. And we've, those are the only complaints that we've gotten from that property out there is how they are handling that. So we're working on that with them and then we'll get that taken care of. And they're very interested in having that done before November because that's the only way that they can start going for grants. We're currently recruiting a maintenance coordinator, the Director of Engineering Facilities, a solid waste manager slash environmental specialist, and temporary laborers. We have had some hires this week that I'll tell you about in the correct departments. In Community Development, the Planning and Zoning Commission had a work session on the 9th. They reviewed short-term rental-related definitions, continued discussion on possible amendments to commission bylaws, and discussed zoning issues related to childcare facilities. This is ahead of my request in August for them to look at the zoning around North Star if we do decide to pursue a childcare option there. It's not zoned for that, so we're trying to get ready for that, if that's the direction we're going to go. In the packet review for their July 16th meeting, the commission discussed the code amendment for assisted living residences and requested postponement of the parking variance that was on the agenda for the Maritime Museum to be put on the September 17th regular meeting. We did hear back from FEMA, so FEMA is alive, which is amazing. We didn't know how long that was going to be, but we did hear back. We got some comments from them on our multi-jurisdiction, multi-hazard mitigation plan. So staff is working with the Alaska Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Management for guidance on how to get those comments taken care of from FEMA. In finance, the, you've probably seen your property tax statement in the mail. People are starting to come in and pay. If you do have a mortgage, you do not need to come in and pay. It gets taken care of in your mortgage, and that's confusing for some folks. From 2023, we had seven properties that have been submitted to the court for an issuance of a clerk's deed. If you have not paid your taxes for the 2023 taxes, the borough will now be a co, co-person on your deed. Property Assessment and Taxation Implamation Project, our go-live date is currently planned for September of 2025. Our Electronic Time Street Project, if you were to walk around the building, you'll see that our hardware is there. We're waiting for end of the year transactions to get done in finance before we do a test of that. And we have a new payroll technician starting on Monday, July 14th, which is this Monday. In assessing, we have 45 senior citizens and disabled veterans that remain undetermined. That naturally has an impact on how much revenue we come, that comes in through property tax. If all of those would get their $150,000 exemption, we're going to be getting less money than we had planned. Exemption appeals, as you had training tonight. You know, your Alutec Foundation Appeal is scheduled for next Thursday. We have senior citizen and disabled veterans good cause hearings scheduled for August 21st. Right now, we have two senior citizens. Right now, we have two senior citizens that have filed for a good cause hearing. In engineering facility, we have rehired a temporary labor that has worked for us in the past, and we have offered, and the offer has been accepted, for a full-time maintenance specialist. Anticipated start date is July 23rd. We do have one application for the Director of Engineering Facilities, and we're going to start reviewing applications next week. Chiningak School Painting was advertised on June 30th. The facilities contract for parking lots and road maintenance, the advertising went out in June 11th. There is a mandatory pre-bid meeting on July 7th, and bids are due into the borough on July 17th. This past week, we had our annual tsunami sirens preventative maintenance going on. All of the batteries on the road system were replaced. The weather did not allow us to get out to Old Harbor, Akiak, but we're working with the vendor to reschedule those visits. And KIB is looking at the possibility of coordinating with the city. We have 90-plus batteries that may or may not be good, that we're going to see if anyone else can use before we recycle them out of the landfill. At the KFRC, I mentioned, we're 15 weeks out on our pumps. Last week, Pump 1 experienced a critical failure, but was replaced by KIB maintenance team using a known goods bear. And thanks to Cody, oh, he's still here, for stepping in and helping out that repair. He spent all day over there getting that fixed. The system is now back up and fully operational. Out of the landfill, the regional solid waste management plan, initial meeting occurred on the 1st, and they're working with the firm on data collection. And that's a joint project with the Kodiak Area Native Association. We're also getting ready to do some joint training with Kana on refrigerant removing from freezers and refrigerators that'll happen later this year. Staff issued an RFP for the landfill's surface water monitoring contract on July 1st, and we are currently working on the facility parking lot line painting. Cody mentioned this a little bit, and I wanted to touch on it too. In the past, when the Kodiak Island Borough knew that there was only one vendor on the island, we sometimes just went to that vendor and scheduled work with them. That's not a very transparent way to do business, and so not, and Cody wants to, and I want him to. When we go out for stuff now, we're asking for quotes, and we're going out for bid, and we're doing what code says. And that is causing frustration with contractors, and we get contractors come in and they're mad because that's not how we used to do it. We just used to call them, and now they're concerned that we're trying to give their business away. And that's not what we're trying to do. We're just trying to follow code and make the way that we spend taxpayer money as transparent as possible. So Cody's done a really good job in making sure that we do that, and he's done very good with explaining to contractors, and they leave calm. So it's good to, I'm right across the hall from it, so I get to see it and overhear, eavesdrop if you will. And he's doing a really good job with explaining why we're doing things the way we're doing the way we're doing them now, and that's worked out really, really good. Okay. In information technology, they're working on administrative tasks. They've been helping with records requests. They're reviewing network security scans and getting critical severity issues patched. They're also working on RFPs for more security stuff. At the Leachate Treatment Plant, they're working on our WIN 911 system, which is our alert system. They're also finishing up 15 employees and are getting, have gotten recently two new monitors at their workstations. And so there's a lot of new hardware rolling out. And GIS is working on maps for community development for their upcoming transportation and facilities meeting, and they're creating flight plans for drone imaging. It's a pretty fancy drone, so they can plan it before it's up in the air where it's going to go. The rest of your packet tonight is just that school district memo with the, how the school district is looking at the costs for North Star, and then the Excel spreadsheets from nonprofit funding. And with that, I am happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Amy. Oh, look at us. Scott?
What's happening with Tyler?
The implementation project, they, every week, we just get something that says we're at 25%. We're obviously late. We have two communities in front of us, Matsu and Juno, and so because SEMA is the lead assessor and president of the AAAO, which is our society for assessing in the state, she gets to hear all the time about what the other communities are doing. And so she gets updates before Tyler tells us about, oh, Matsu just pushed off, or Juno's not starting when they want. So I think they're having a little bit of trouble adjusting to Alaska, but we, there's, the project is still going. And so our September date will work good for us because we don't want to be anywhere near that August 15th tax payment date. So September will work for us. The only, like, concern that I have is because Tyler is so late, we're still having to pay for Harris on an extended, like, we should be done and we should be able to stop paying Harris. So our costs are higher than we expected because of how long the process is taking.
Thank you.
Ryan and then Larry.
Let's see, Amy, so when you guys are redoing the Kodiak Rodeo and Fairgrounds lease, one thing that I've heard through unofficial state chatter during inspections out there is the need for SWIPs. So Storm Water Protection Prevention Pollution Programs and the coexistence of the Raceway. So when, when you deal with SBE on that, if you can make sure that the environmental concerns are addressed and proxied through subleases?
Is that, the SWIPs, is that just for the Raceway?
So it's any, it's any land disturbance of an acre or more, and so the racetrack and the associated parking areas would exceed that one acre. And it's one of the, I mean, it's a, you drive by and it's visible, and so without it having that registration and the coinciding water testing that needs to happen, it's a permitted process through the state. And so with that not being on the registry, it's forward-facing to any regulator who drives by, so.
Thank you.
Larry?
Just a little clarification. I don't expect, maybe you'll have an answer. You know, there's been some talk that because of the recent legislation in the US Congress that our hospital might close, I think it was referred to earlier. But I understand that included in the bill, according to Senator Murkowski's office, was an increase of $25 billion to $50 billion to support rural hospitals, which negated, you know, the idea that our hospital and Cordova's and sort of, we're all going to close. So I think we're okay there at this point in time. Is that correct?
I think that the answer to that is unknown. So yes, Senator Murkowski absolutely did put, make sure that there were protections for Alaska included in that, but Providence is a, like, an international company, so saying that Providence is safe, I don't know. So, and the reason I say that is because of the fires in California, that blocked the purchase of our hospital by Providence. So what's happening in other states absolutely does affect Providence's cash flow and how they can treat us. I don't, we don't have any indication right now. Providence hasn't said anything. There's no reason to think that Providence is going to close, but I, because they are an international company, I would think that they are going to be affected on a broader level. But obviously, that's something that we're going to watch really closely and stay in contact with Providence about in case there's any indication. I did just meet with the hospital administrator yesterday, and none of that was brought up. So I'm hoping that we're safe.
Thank you.
Steve?
I don't really have a question as much as a comment, and that is, on the lease for the rodeo fairgrounds, I would definitely like to see that it is acceptable to have someone living there. That's a large piece of land, animals, buildings. They're not perfect security, but it's better to have someone living there than nothing. So I would, it's not been in past lease, but happened for a long time. There was even a building there, or house there at one time. And so I would like to make sure that is in the lease. Thank you.
Thank you. That, that's our intention as well, and we have that language in the Saloney Creek lease that they have a caretaker over there. And our old code enforcement officer, Tom Quas, was actually the caretaker out there. So the borough has been really involved. But yeah, that's our intention, to make it an option. They don't, I don't think they have the funding right now to build a caretaker quarter, but they do have someone that has a fifth wheel, and in accordance with Borough Code, if you are building in the next so many years, you can live in an RV. So we're just going to make sure that they do it in accordance with Borough Code.
Any other questions for Amy? Okay, all right. Clerks' comments.
Thank you. We are now in election mode. We met with the city clerk staff on Wednesday, and we discussed partnership for the upcoming election. Examples of partnership with them would be for early voting. Instead of separating that, we're using this room for the ease and convenience of the voters. We're also co-sharing some of our equipments for the teen center and the harbor master, and we're also sharing election workers. We have discussed and scheduled election training on September 15th for the city workers and September 16th for the borough workers. We have also established communication with our ballot programmers, our ballot printers, and our pamphlet printer. Those are two separate printers that we're using. Nominating packets are now available in the clerk's office. They are also available online. We have sent nominating packets to the villages and also to the Chinnyak Library, and we made those available there. The filing period would be August 1st through August 15th. You, we are also processing liquor licenses, renewals, and also Friends by the Ocean will be coming back before you as a new license because they are correcting the address that we asked them to correct. And they are also changing their name from Friends by the Ocean LLC to Friends by the Ocean without the LLC, and that needs to go back before the assembly. We are processing also records requests, a few of them, and one is pretty extensive. We have a records destruction list that will be going before the assembly, and also a records retention schedule revision. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Nova. All right. Assembly members' comments, we'll start on that end.
Oh, all right. So without time to think about my comment, I'm just going to freelance here. So one of the conversations that came up tonight during our BOE training gave me an allusion that I want to address, not only with my fellow assembly members, but I guess just for the general sense of public. When, when we as a borough are assessing a property and trying to collect revenue, we are working within our legal rights to try and operate as an entity. And there, we do that with the best faith effort, and we do that with the knowledge that we know at the time. Having gone through some similar cases in the past, I know that borough staff received some cannon fodder, and I want to make sure that the public and our assembly is well communicated with. The intent of our staff is to not only do their job and do it the best that they can, but do it with the best intentions of what we are trying to accomplish as a community. So I guess as, as we go into the BOE next week, one of the reminders that I would give is our staff handles a tremendous amount of cannon fodder from the discussions and the things, or the decisions that we make here. So please, community that's listening, bear that in mind. Assembly members, please defend our staff. And outside of that, that's all I've got. Thank you. Oh, nope, sorry. Thank you for a wonderful nonprofit discussion tonight. That was great. Thanks.
Thank you, Ryan. Scott?
No comment.
Larry?
The testimony tonight from both users of support services for nonprofits and representatives of the nonprofits was real. We had somebody talk about burying one of their clients. It was intimated, and I think we all know that there is a drug crisis in our community that is tearing apart families and lives, and it's gone on for a long time. And what we're funding tonight are the people that take care of those people that need help. And what we heard tonight is there's a desperate need. I wish we could give more, we can't. But I do appreciate living in a community where so many people work so hard to take care of other people. And it is a pleasure to be on the assembly to support that effort to the best of our ability. There's some real challenges in Kodiak, and I hope that we can all contribute to taking care of those challenges, whether individually or corporately, or by donating what we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Steve?
Kind of a follow with that is, I do believe in the nonprofits. I think they do a good job in this town. I think we had a good discussion about seeing how close, if not fully, funding we can. And I'm glad the borough puts that forward. I would also publicly like to acknowledge the amazing amount of money in this town that is donated privately to many different organizations. Some people donate very large amounts that you never know about because one of their conditions is they remain anonymous. But I would like to thank the community as a whole. When I worked with the Special Olympics per capita, Kodiak did the best. Now all the fundraising's done through the state, but when it was done independently on a per capita basis, Kodiak was by far more generous than any other community. So I'd like to thank all those people out there that make private donations. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Beau?
All right. I have a yellow sheet in front of me that I'm going to slow walk over to the clerk's desk if anyone else would like to add their name to it. This is in reference to the Borough Lands Committee, and the potential draft ordinance would be to amend Kodiak Island Borough Code 2.160.020 to designate the Director of the Community Development Department to serve as the Chair of the Borough Lands Committee. The Community Development Director is the subject matter expert in this area who could drive discussion in an objective way that is data-driven and based on community needs and our comprehensive plan. I think this person would be best suited to do it. He walked out, but this, this comes with the guilt that potentially would have to attend more meetings, but it also comes with the confidence that he could serve in this role very well. And if you want to add your name to a request for assistance with staff to help him prepare this ordinance, that would be great. Last thing, thank you, Madam Manager, and your wonderful directors and acting director. They perform admirably, and they're doing such a fantastic job of getting us modernized and up to speed and getting us away from the, this is how we've always done it. Oh, I can't stand that statement. So I'm really refreshed to hear that, that they're pushing back and following code and playing by the rules and keeping us in line. So thank you to all of them sitting in attendance, and Chris, when you see him, and thanks for your leadership.
All right. Thank you, Beau. Sitting in for the mayor, I don't have too much. Thank you, Amy and Nova, for your staff, and for everyone who came out to give comment today, and thank you to KE DC for walking us through some of the things that you are working on. We have a regular meeting next week following our Board of Equalization meeting, beginning at 6:30, and I will see you then, and we'll adjourn the meeting at, what is it, 9:39?